Thousand Oaks City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 12th, 2017. If you'd please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Bill Della Penya.
Present.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Mayor Fox.
I am here. Item four is a request for continuance of any agenda item, public hearing item. Do we have any requests for continuance? All right, hearing done, we'll move to item five, and that is special presentations. To begin our special presentations this evening, I'd like to invite up Graham Watts. Graham is our coordinator for emergency services. So Graham, there you are, okay. This is a timely presentation in light of the very significant fires that we're having across the region, here in Ventura County. And Graham is here to join me at the podium in partnership with the Ventura County Fire Department. Do we have Chief Smith here, Rip from...
Scott.
Okay, all right, great. To give recognition to the Community Emergency Response Team, better known as CERT. And I can tell you from personal experience in my day job as a fire chief, that CERT volunteers are integral to our community. In times of disaster where first responders are stretched to the limit, providing the service that we need, both law enforcement and fire, our CERT volunteers step up and they provide a critical role in providing service to our community. And so they are very, very important to our overall public safety. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Graham to talk about the CERT graduates for this year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. For more than 10 years, the city, in partnership with the Ventura County Fire Department, has coordinated the Community Emergency Response Team Program. This is a free training program offered to residents 18 years and older who learn basic emergency preparedness skills and individual preparedness for their neighborhood use. The CERT program is a six-week program that's free and offered by the city twice a year that provides classroom instruction and concludes with a drill at the Fire Department Headquarters in Camrio. TO CERT graduation drills this year were held in May and October. Thousand Oaks residents have completed the CERT program that are here tonight and are now eligible to join the city's Disaster Assistance Response Program as coordinated through the Thousand Oaks Police Department. For 2017, the Ventura County CERT program has graduated close to 300 residents countywide, which includes about 36 members of TO CERT. Tonight, several TO CERT graduates are here to be recognized for their time and efforts in this very important training. Will the CERT members please come forward to be recognized? They include Regina Martinez, Chris Young, David Goldstein, Daniel Foley, Elena Smith, Jonathan Morgan, Stephanie Hipkit...
Congratulations.
Toby Willis, Tom Pezza, and Yvonne Brockwell. Key instructors to the program for the Fire Department include Pat Kelly, Marisol Rodriguez, and Scott O'Connell. Scott's here tonight for Chief Smith, along with Chief Hagel, to recognize the members. Scott, you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Graham, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just want to speak on behalf of Chief Smith and Chief Lorenzen. They're both... Sorry that they couldn't make this, especially Chief Smith. Unfortunately, with the fires going on, everybody's a little bit busy. I'm one of the instructors for the CERT program. I teach predominantly in the East County since I live in Thousand Oaks. And so as we can see with the fires up in the northern part of our county, in Ventura, moving into Santa Barbara County, CERT program is a huge, huge asset to the Fire Department and to the cities. And so we thank Thousand Oaks City for hosting it, giving us a place to teach the class. And we just really appreciate all the citizens stepping forward. I know that when a disaster happens, I'm gonna have to go into work. And so it's gonna be all the CERT-trained people that are gonna be saving my wife and my kids. So I appreciate all you guys doing all your training. And this is just kind of the first step. So always try to find more training that you can do to be able to be better prepared for that disaster, because fortunately, it's not if it strikes, but when it strikes. So, thank you.
Mayor, City Council, and all the CERT members, I want to thank you so much. As the police chief, I had the opportunity to go up to Ojai with 34 officers the night the fire broke out. And many of our officers are still working up in that area through mutual aid in Santa Barbara. But what I noted, particularly in the upper Ojai area, which has a strong presence of CERT members, DART members, and search and rescues, a huge volunteer cadre of people, is I was able to witness CERT members and DART members literally saving their streets side by side, knowing what to do, how to help other neighbors out there, pulling hoses, helping the Fire Department. And you're on a pathway of providing safety for the neighborhood. And I just hope it's contagious and spread the word, and we really appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you.
Okay, think we're gonna do a picture? Let's go. Madam Clerk, could you call public comment, please?
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Nineteen individuals have presented cards. And pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. So our first three speakers, and I just want to call to the community's attention, there's a chair right immediately adjacent to the speaker's podium. So if you're the second person called, you're kind of the on-deck person. So make your way and have a seat there, and then we'll just keep rotating it through in that very nicely and smoothly moves us through public comments in a smooth fashion. So our first three speakers, Vinay Bonsal, followed by Robin Close, followed by Andy Levine. Yep?
Thank you. My name is Vinay Bonsal, and I live in Newberry Park. And this item is regarding the closing of the Y. So I have been living here since 2003, working for Amgen. And I was out of Amgen in 2007.
Excuse me, Mr. Bonsal, if you could speak closer to the mic.
Okay.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Or pull it down even?
All right.
There we go. Great.
So in 2007, I was out of Amgen, and I had the option to relocate. I chose to stay here because of the Y. It has been very beneficial to me, so I continue to stay here. And now that it's about to close, there's no reason for me to stay here, so that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to say was, the way the Y informed us about its closing was... is not proper in the sense that we just got an email that we are closing at the end of December. They didn't give us an option, they didn't try to understand if there are other ways we can keep this facility open. So from what I have learned in talking to various people, the only good thing which can satisfy everybody is if there's a way to share this facility between the church and the people who want to use it as a health-fitness facility, I think that would be a nice option to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Robin Close, followed by Andy Levine. Good evening.
Good evening, Robin Close, Newberry Park. The YMCA has been the center of life in Dos Fiantos. The indoor pool is where little children learn to swim and later are trained to compete in swim meets. The pool is where older members with health issues such as arthritis and multiple sclerosis get relief in aerobics classes. Seniors also take Tai Chi and chair yoga classes to improve their balance. It is where we have spin classes and other strenuous classes to stay healthy and keep our hearts strong. It is where my husband, who just turned 80, is lifting weights. We love the philosophy of lifelong health, responsibility to community, and respect for all people. It is a diverse and inclusive community. All are welcome. I made my friends at the Y. The directors know all of us. I raised money for the Y. We have many stay-at-home moms who like to be close to home in case their children need them when they are at school at Sycamore Canyon. They can work out at the Y, which is near, in case of an emergency. Everything at the Y is comfortable for families. It is a beautiful health facility and pool. It needs to stay that way whether it remains a YMCA or another health-centered facility takes over the property. Please help us keep this needed, health-oriented center in Dos Fiantos.
Thank you. You know, just for the viewing public and for the folks here at home, I went through the cards. There's a lot of speakers that are from the Dos Fiantos-Newberry Park area, and while I don't know what you're gonna talk about, I have a sense there's a large interest in the Y. And in the interest of... I don't want you to come up and make your public comment and then leave, because council's really not provided an opportunity to comment on public comment. But I'd like the city attorney just to briefly let folks know factually where the city is as it relates to the Y, so you have some context when you're coming up and you're making your public comment. Because at the end of the public comment, we're just gonna move on to the next item, and I don't want you to leave tonight without at least some sense of where the city is on this issue. So Mr. Levine, if you could just... one second, I'm gonna have Ms. Noonan just briefly discuss where the city's at in relation to the YMCA. Ms. Noonan.
Thank you, Mayor. The YMCA is a private organization, and as such, the city doesn't have the ability to regulate how it closes its doors, when it closes its doors, or even how it gives notification to its users on how... that it's going to close its doors. Because it is a private organization, really no different than a person who owns a restaurant or a person who owns a shoe store. And the sale of the YMCA is actually a private real estate transaction. It's between two private parties. The city is not involved in that. We have no... we've had no conversations with the seller on selling the property. And at this point, it's a sales transaction between two private parties. We don't even have jurisdiction over that, because it's a private transaction. The city can't regulate who the YMCA decides to sell their private property to. It's no different than the city not being able to tell any of you whether or not you can... or who you can sell your house to. It's the same concept. We can't legally stop the sale of the property. We can't get an injunction for the... to stop the sale of the property. We can't file a lawsuit for that reason either. We're not in a position to purchase the property either at this point. It's... I don't know where the parties are with respect to the sales transaction. I would imagine if they're in escrow, however, the seller wouldn't even be able to talk to the city about selling the property, because they're in good faith escrow with the property purchaser. But again, I don't know where they are in that transaction. With respect to future use of the property, I think that our Community Development Director has talked to several people who have had concerns, and I just want to reiterate that any future use of the property will have to go through the appropriate review process. At this point in time, however, the city hasn't received any formal applications for a future use. We haven't received anything in writing with respect to what the future use will be. So we can't even articulate right now what that process will be, because we don't know what the future use will be. We've got nothing in writing. So that's kind of where the city is with respect to the YMCA at this point. I would encourage you all, however, as the YMCA is the property owner, I would encourage you to reach out to the YMCA for additional information, because they should have more information than the city does at this time.
Well, thank you, Ms. Noonan. One other item, you might have heard me make comments last week at the REORG about Ms. Della Penya and her attention to detail. The city did, several years ago, donate $1 million, I believe, to the YMCA. And that's part of the record. But I'm gonna talk... I'm gonna have Mr. Powers address that issue, so that's fully transparent, everybody understands what's standing or really what not standing, so to speak, the city has with respect to that. And then, Mr. Levine, I certainly want everybody to come up and make their comments.
Absolutely, Mayor Fox. As you did reference, the City Council did make one of the lead gifts back in July of 2000. They initiated a $1 million gift to the YMCA in Dos Fiantos. Similar grants were also issued to senior concerns, Ventura County Discovery Center and other entities at that time, as was common practice during those years. The grant that was made there at this juncture, there are no formal obligations for repayment upon the resale of that property based on the amount of time that has gone past since 2000. But as the escrow continues to move forward, I have had direct contact with leadership of the Y regarding their future plans, and will certainly work to encourage and hopefully ensure that investments are made into the other YMCA in town, given the city's contribution, that those dollars will stay somewhat local.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Powers. So now, everybody knows what we know. So, Mr. Levine, and that'll be followed by Sharon Moret. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. I just want to say I'm very disappointed at the YMCA how it's been treating their Newberry Park residents. They haven't really gave us too much notice about this sale. And we... and especially in Newberry Park, we don't really have too much of entertainment. It feels like we had to go all the way to Thousand Oaks. And I think it's time for Newberry Park to get together and say to the businesses around here that we need more entertainment. We need a movie theater out in Newberry Park especially. But like I said, I'm very disappointed how this YMCA is closing, because there is a YMCA in Thousand Oaks, but you could say, oh, it's in... it's so far away from our parts. And there's a YMCA in Westlake, but that's still very far away. And we're always getting the short end of the... it seems like Newberry Park's getting the short end of the stick with all of the YMCA. And one more comment. I hope Thousand Oaks does not give the YMCA any more money, how it is treating the Newberry Park residents. I just want to say one other thing. The people at the YMCA in Newberry Park are very friendly. But I'm just saying, the YMCA leadership should be very ashamed of themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. Sharon Moret, followed by Raimi Schwartz. Ms. Moret? Followed by Ms. Schwartz. Good evening.
Newberry Park has often received the short end of the stick. Councilman Price assured me a few years ago that although he was selecting a planning commissioner from Westlake Village, that person would do his best to correct the unevenness of treatment of Newberry Park residents. Please deny the special use permit for the church. The church takes up too much of the space that is meant to be a community center in Dos Fiantos. It is better if the church builds on land near to Kohl's or elsewhere. A few years ago, at a futures meeting, Mayor Fox said that not only do we need the senior center in Thousand Oaks, but one was needed in Newberry Park. As what could be that center already exists, the city should buy it. It is insane to fill the pool when the heated pool is needed by those who are recovering from surgery or have ailments such as Parkinson's or arthritis. The pool is the newest one in Newberry Park. People also go to classes there to stay or get limber, so that they will not... they will have less of chance of injury. The global adult center needs to go back to being the global senior center. 18-year-olds have different needs than seniors. We need the city to buy the YMCA facility. It is not as if the YMCA could not be saved. They are just not interested in it. They want to cut loose and finish their grandiose project in LA County that will cost a total of $35 million. Seniors need the large heated pool and the classrooms for classes. The city could buy the facility and have performances, lotteries, and other drives to collect money to pay off the cost of the facility. When I joined the YMCA in July, I was never told that it was up for sale or that there was a deficit of $8,000 per month. The YMCA was not forthright with us. Something could have been done to resolve the deficit if they wanted to. Currently, Westlake has a promenade as an outlet for their residents. They also have two movie theaters. Thousand Oaks has the mall and the lakes. They also have two movie theaters. Newberry Park has none of the above. Also, when Lowe's was approved by Home Depot, it was very sad, as this creates duplicity when we need so much more in Newberry Park. The Dos Fiantos Community Center says that it has classes for adults on the premises. The brochure says adults, but then it says that the age starts at 13.
Ms. Moret, I need you to conclude your comments.
It's really crazy.
Ms. Moret?
The parks are not...
Ms. Moret?
...balanced and have too many classes for the young and a scarcity for the elderly.
Your time's expired. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Price?
If I may. Ms. Moret, I just wanted to let you know that the planning commissioner that I did select has since moved and now lives in Newberry Park.
All right, we have our next speaker is Raimi Schwartz, followed by Earl Schwartz. Good evening.
Hey, good evening, you guys.
You can use the other mic if you want.
Oh, yeah, because I'm actually taller.
Yeah.
Usually I'm shorter than everybody.
There you go.
Hi, good evening. I'm sure you recognize my name. You've been getting the petition that I have created with Robert Reynolds. I am a resident of Dos Fiantos and a Realtor in Canal Valley who does a significant amount of work out here. So I'm sure you do recognize my name, because I've been contacted from many people from the city regarding what's going on with the petition and the upheaval that's going up in Dos Fiantos right now. So what... in its inception of the YMCA, for Dos Fiantos, the Miller Brothers' vision was to have something for the community to go to. And they donated the land, and you, City of Thousand Oaks, gave $1 million towards it, and other private donors that are sitting here in this audience with other ones that could not come. And now we have an issue with the YMCA stating that they are in red of $75,000 to $100,000 a year. Well, none of the members or Dos Fiantos residents or this entire community know that. So if you are a businessman, which most of you are, do private business as well, like I do, you would say, wow, we are running in red, we are nonprofit, we don't want to be in red, we don't need to make a profit, but we want to be whole. What would we do? We would fundraise. We would reach out to the community. We would send letters from the inception of that YMCA that everybody loves so dearly, and that is the core of Dos Fiantos, along with Sycamore Canyon School, and say, we need help, community. You want us, we want to be here, but we need help. We need $100 a person, we need $50 a person. We need you to bring your family members, your neighbors again. I'm putting new equipment in, I'm revamping the classes. The Y has been run into the ground, okay? I've watched it, and my children work there, and I am very loyal there, because I live there, and I sell a lot of real estate up there, and tell everybody, this is the greatest place. And I can't tell you the amount of clients that I have joined that Y because of me. It's been mismanaged, and you need to know that, because it always comes from the top. So for the YMCA to now make a statement that the community is not supporting us and we need to close our doors is not okay. It's unacceptable not to reach out to the community and tell them where they're at. Instead, they blindside an entire community and tell, we're selling. Nobody knows it, and the only reason I found it is because my son works there. So it's taken the YMCA not till last week, a week and a half ago, to send out to the members that they're closing their doors, December 31st, and they're selling. Do you think that's right? This has been on the market since May. I'm a residential Realtor, I have commercial guys, all day long I talk to, they didn't even know it. So...
You need to conclude, Ms. Schwartz.
Okay, so the Y belongs... a facility of health and fitness belongs there for it to be an inclusive entity in our community, not a divisive structure.
Thank you.
So, hold on one second, because I'm gonna... I'm gonna give... I need five more seconds, because this is not what I was gonna address, but I'm going to now, since the city attorney has decided to say that you don't know anything about the sale of this property, the buyer of this property. You have a council member, Rob McCoy, who is part of that purchase. He is the pastor of a church that he is getting money from, is backing, to have that church in Dos Fiantos, correct or not? So you obviously are very privy of this sale that's happening, right? No? No? So he... no? 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 Rob McCoy doesn't talk...
Okay.
No, you guys don't know, right?
Ms. Schwartz, your time really is way overdue. I'm gonna move to the next speaker. Thanks.
So you'll be hearing... so I want you to know that there will be... there will be... there will be an injunction that is made. We have an attorney. So I'm sorry, and all due respect, we are not... we do not want anything up there other than a facility to have seniors and kids in that pool and people working out there and have what we have and why people live there.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Earl Schwartz.
That's your message.
Thank you, Ramey. And now I'm going to follow up and continue on this conversation. Let's not beat around the bush. My name is Earl Schwartz. I'm a licensed civil engineer, and I'm very familiar with development proceedings. And our wonderful council members here, Mr. McCoy, as my wife said very well, is very entrenched in the purchase of this property. The -- let's get down to the bottom line. It was commercially for sale that even commercial Realtors, as my wife said, weren't even aware of. The bottom line is that the Y needs money to finish off the triumphal development. There is a very large, there is a very financially billionaire in Mr. Wilks that's very, that is the backer for Mr. McCoy in this purchase. A very smart idea, from a business standpoint, the Y decides, you know what, we'll tank the Y, sell the Y for a song. Mr. McCoy is well aware of structuring that deal, selling it for a song well below its market value, with the deal that Mr. Wilks would then fund the balance of the triumphal development because Murdoch is now no longer backing the money. So let's, let's stop playing games and let's start realizing what's really happening here. It smells to high heaven, and it ain't the smoke in the air. So with that in mind, we're not going to stop this fight. It's a private sale, you're absolutely right. But the bottom line is, there are avenues and mechanisms for which what's happening with this Y in it -- and by the way, this center of, it's called the Village in this commercial location, it's made up of three parcels. It's also well-known that the Heavenly Fathers Foundation is going to purchase the Y, as they're doing. They're also going to purchase the other two parcels, so they control the parking to all three parcels so that that way they can, because they have 500 members in their church, and there's no way the parking will suit that many members. So with the control of the entire development, also known as God's Peak Village, from what I'm understanding is now the name that this is going to be given, that, and that they're going to control all the parking, which will then allow them, from a SUP standpoint, to satisfy certain factors. Now, with that, I have 30 seconds left. I'll say that I am, I have no problem with a church, I have no problem with anything else, but it's a travesty. My kids work at the Y, my oldest graduated UCLA. The pool, hundreds, hundreds of seniors rely on that Y every day for the pool. It's a travesty for a lot of reasons that that Y is closing. That said, the Y is going to be closed to a church, that's the use, and it's going to be concreted in, the pool's going to be concreted in and used as a, as their chapel, as their sanctuary. So let's not play games and say we don't know what that future use is going to be and who that user is going to be. There's been no application granted, but that's what it's going to be.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
You're welcome.
So our next speaker is Bonnie Shub, followed by Alicia Reynolds. And I know you guys see the clock as the council does, so I just asked the speakers to try to pay attention to the speaker lights. I do my best not to interrupt you, but I do want to move on with the public comment for the next speaker. So if you could just do your best, that would be great. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Shub. I live in Dos Vientos. I happen to be president of AAUW Thousand Oaks. However, I'm not speaking on their behalf tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of some of my closest friends who I met at the Y. I bought my house in Dos Vientos new in 2001. One major reason I bought there was the planned community. I was surprised that there was a required homeowners association, but I didn't mind paying those dues because it was part of belonging to this community. The salesperson for the builder of our homes said that there would be a community center built, and that was true. These days, I have my hair done at the Urban Dybar. We use the cleaners next door. My dentist is Dr. Chaffey. My optometrist is Dr. Yu, and we have eaten many times in both restaurants, as well as frequenting Vino Vino and buying needed items at the Village Trader. But the center of this community center has always been the health and fitness facility which has been available at the Y. I remember when the village, then known as Para Isso, was being built, and the rat infestation so many of us had during that time because of the digging. I remember the delay in the Y opening because we had to wait to have the extra driveway for those who drove to the Y, but the area was mainly built as a pedestrian center with very little parking because it was to be a place that our community could walk to. Many people are surprised that I'm about to celebrate my 75th birthday in a few weeks. I attribute that fact to the fact that I don't look my age because I've been able to take water fitness classes, Zumba classes, and have an active social life with friends that I met and would see at our neighborhood's health and fitness and community center. That's what the Y is for us. It also served as an emergency place for me to shower on two different occasions when I had business commitments, but the electricity was shut off at my home for system upgrades, and there was the time my water heater burst and I was unable to shower at home. My husband volunteered leading a musical chorus at the wire for, at the Y for three years. Since our charter membership, we never missed a monthly payment to the Y, even those times when we were unable to use the Y due to travel or extended illness. We belonged there. We were promised that the facility would be there, and the building was zoned for a health and fitness center available to any of us in this diverse community who wanted to participate. I implore you not to allow a zoning change that will take this facility away from our isolated neighborhood.
Our next speaker is Alicia Reynolds, followed by Gregory Main.
Good evening, Ms. Reynolds. Good evening. Hello, my name is Alicia. Let me share my situation with you. Thirty-eight years ago, I suffered a severe, near-death head trauma, okay, experienced in a car accident that has left me with the condition of epilepsy. After a five-day coma, I received 10 weeks of intensive hospital treatment and rehabilitation, but the condition of epilepsy was not removed. Then 26 years ago, I experienced a severe relapse that resulted in the onset of a four-and-a-half-hour coma, excuse me, seizure. Because this seizure was unable to be medically terminated, an emergency-induced coma that lasted five days was required. As a result, I have been left unable to drive, and this is the only workout facility that I am able to walk to. This transaction effectively bans me to an exercise facility. For this reason, I will continue to suffer a great impairment due to the lack of physical exercise provided by this YMCA. Aside from that, I know that the closing of this workout facility will also affect a large amount of individuals in our community. Successfully dealing with my current medical condition is largely due to the physical and mental strength I have gained and maintained by regular exercising at this YMCA facility. Now, how many here of you are supporting this YMCA? How many of you? Raise your hands, please. Okay, then, let's think about that. Thank you very much.
I'm Greg Main. I live in Dos Vientos. Been a member of the YMCA since it opened, and I'd like to talk about the pool situation in Thousand Oaks. Currently, there's only one public full-time pool. It has very limited hours. It's at Cal Lutheran University. It's a shared facility. It's not really very adequate, especially for people that have to swim indoors. A lot of the seniors and people like myself have skin cancer issues. We need an indoor pool. There isn't one in the city. Closing the YMCA will take that away from -- a lot of the seniors in this room and in our community use that pool. It's like their social life, their exercise class, it's everything to them. Many of the kids in our community learn to swim there. Both my daughters, I have one there, it was their first job. There's a swim team there. And so what will happen when this facility closes, if it does, is a lot of these people just won't work out, or they just won't learn how to swim, or they just won't join a swim team. So the ramifications are not as simple as a real estate transaction. It really does affect the community. I think the city should buy the facility, and I've heard, well, it's not profitable. Well, how about the basketball courts, the indoor ones in Dos Vientos? I don't think those are profitable. I mean, they have a pickup game once a week in there, one volleyball game on every other Sunday. So I don't think profitability should be the city's focus when it comes to hearing us about this facility. Our community's growing older, there's a lot of seniors here, and I think you should look to take care of those seniors, and a pool and a recreational facility like this is sorely needed in this community. Here's one that's already built, so your cost wouldn't be as, as much as trying to acquire new property and build something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Main. Robert Reynolds, followed by Seth Stevens.
Yes, my name is Robert Reynolds. I live in Newbury Park, Dos Vientos. And I'm, I along with Ramey, started the petition drive. We currently have nearly 1,200 petitioners in 12 days. It's 100 per day. I'm speaking for 1,194 signed petitioners who have stated the following: We are here to stop the sale and conversion of our local YMCA health and fitness facility to a church or any other form. This is a serious health and safety issue for our community. Once the pool is cemented in, it will change the face of our community forever. It is the only indoor pool within our greater community that provides year-round access. It is the only pool facility available to provide low-impact exercise for those who are crippled, handicapped, injured, and elderly. This is the only exercise facility within walking distance in Dos Vientos for those who cannot or will not drive, for example, my wife. It would be a crime to lose this facility. This facility services the entire community rather than a small sect, which is the greater good for the greatest number. We feel the city council hasn't -- I'm, I'm just, I'm missing a point here. Out of 232 of the paper ballots that we had signed, only seven declined to sign, and only two said they'd rather have a church there. That's less than 1%. We feel the city council has an incumbent duty, if not legal, and a moral obligation to intervene in this transaction to save our critically needed health and fitness facility for the benefit of the obvious majority. I have been told the city cannot stop a sale between private parties. City Attorney just mentioned that. She failed to mention an option that's, I'm going to bring up, that every city should know about, and that is, I understand the city is able to impose eminent domain for such things as parks, libraries, bicycle paths, courthouses, when it provides a vital public surface that benefits the majority while causing the least damage to the minority. So why not this critical community health and fitness facility that was dedicated to the community by the Miller Brothers, funded by a million-dollar city grant, and by numerous individual contributions? This doesn't fit the definition, this doesn't fit the definition of a public interest and eminent domain. YMCA doesn't even want the facility to pay fair value with public support, and there is no loss to the YMCA. One other thing here, I, I along with the petitioners would like to demand a public hearing on this topic so we have our say in the community. Thank you.
Seth Stevens, followed by Craig Everett.
Good evening. Good evening. First, let me say that I thank you to the council for allowing us to meet with you and to express our concerns on a topic that seems to be not a matter for the council, nor anything that you have any prior knowledge of. So thank you very much for giving us that opportunity. I would also take Ms. Noonan's comments at face value. And let's assume for the moment that eminent domain is not, is not a path forward, and certainly I do not advocate interference by the city in private business transactions. So what I would challenge the council to do, assuming these other avenues are not possible or untenable for other reasons, I would challenge you to provide appropriate resources to the residents of Dos Vientos. It's a significantly sized community. You've heard many of the needs that our community has. You've heard the lack of resources in that end of Thousand Oaks. To a significant proportion of Thousand Oaks and to that community, the YMCA is serving a valid, important, life-sustaining function. This, I think, is the role of city council to make sure that these community resources are available to all citizens of this city. And if the other proposals that you've heard tonight are not tenable from your point of view, then I challenge you to come up with one that is workable. We deserve the full attention of the city council and the City of Thousand Oaks commensurate with our size and, and the resources that we contribute to this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Craig Everett, followed by Adam Haverstock.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Thank you, council members. My name is Craig Everett. I'm a resident of Dos Vientos, and I've been members of the, of the Y for, for many years. Actually, entire family, family membership, although I'm generally the only one that goes these days. So, so we've been spending a lot of money on the Y that, above and beyond the call of duty. Just worked out there this morning. It was a nearly epic workout because I'm past the age where we can actually, I can actually have epic workouts anymore. So nearly as, as, as good as I can get. So somebody came up to me the other day and asked, you know, so, so what do you think about this church moving into, into the Y building? And I said, well, I'm not a member of that church, but, you know, I know people who are members of that church, and they seem like really nice people, and generally churches are a good addition to the community. I was surprised that most planned communities actually do have a church, and Dos Vientos didn't. And I swim a lot in the pool at the, at the Y, and I've always thought, this is an amazing room. This, this, this is more like a sanctuary for a church than it is a, than it is a, you know, a pool room. But anyway, so I wasn't surprised that a church would want it. And I explained to the, to the guy, I said, well, the Y is leaving regardless of who the buyer is. They've, they already decided to leave, they want the money to do their triumphal facility, and so the Y staying wasn't ever really a possibility, and who comes in is, is less of an issue. But what I, I wanted to suggest a, my own proposal. The, so Dos Vientos does have a community center. It's called the Dos Vientos Community Center. It's at Dos Vientos Community Park, which is actually is, I believe, the largest community park in Thousand Oaks. Fantastic community center, very large. As mentioned before, it has basketball courts, lots of rooms. It could be retasked with more workout facilities, and there's definitely room on the property. If, if the engineers and the city were really interested in, in continuing to having a pool available, particularly to the seniors, to the community, the children, and to me, because I really like the pool too, build a pool, a Dos Vientos Community Center, an indoor pool. And, and that really solves the problem. And, but, but I have no problem with the church coming into the community. I think they'd be a great addition. They're great people, and, and, I don't know, I think, I think everybody probably can be, can be satisfied in this, and so there's no, I don't think there's any real reason for contention and such. Let's just, you know, find a solution. Let's just find a solution and do it. Thank you.
Adam Haverstock, followed by Moises Mercado.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Adam Haverstock, I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Cano Valley Chamber of Commerce here doing my monthly report. I actually do not have a formal report this evening, but we just wanted to come and say thank you. The local economy is doing great. The local business community is doing great. Your chamber is doing wonderfully. And we think that is in a large part due to our excellent working relationship with the city of Thousand Oaks. So thank you all very much for all you do. One more thank you to Councilmember Bill de la Peña, who served wonderfully as mayor over the last year. We thought it was a wonderful year in part to your leadership. Thank you very much. And we're very much looking forward to a successful 2018 with Mayor Fox. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Moises Mercado, followed by Thomas Kim. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Fox and city council members. My name is Moises Mercado, and I'm a resident of Dos Vientos and a Y member since before the Y opened. We definitely would like to keep the fitness and health center the way it is. We are not against bringing a church or a synagogue or a mosque or whatever. This is about to keep seniors and young children fit. I mean, I'm over 60, so I went to a recovery after a back injury. And the classes that I take at the Y have been very helpful. Some of my friends, they have to use a wheelchair. And the only exercise that they can practice is at the pool. So I'm begging you to help us to keep the Y or the facility as a fitness and health center. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thomas Kim, followed by Craig Dodson. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. Thomas Kim, I've been a resident in Newberry Park since '04. So I agree with what everyone's saying. So I won't belabor that. But I do want to know, I just want to put on the record that I felt the YMCA has egregiously mismanaged everything from the get-go, starting with the construction of the building. When you have an 18,000-square-foot facility with a gym the size of a classroom, you're not going to have longstanding support. People are not going to stay when they're waiting in line for equipment. But that's another matter. The other issue, too, is that I think that they need to study the impact of traffic on Sundays. And that's going to be a clear issue in terms of traffic and safety with what's going on on the weekends. I think the other issue is that by getting rid of the YMCA and having a church there, you're going to lose traffic on the weekdays. And those businesses that are there, they get some overflow, and they're going to suffer. And so it's almost a death knell, I think, for that facility. And so tax revenue and so forth will be lost. I think that certainly I am opposed to the construction of a church on that site. I think that you're having addition by subtraction. You are losing a strong component of the community. Granted, I think the church and the church members, I have no problem with. But I think that when you lose the soul of the facility, it's going to just have far-reaching ramifications in our neighborhood. And so I think that that really needs to be thought out. And lastly, I think that if there is someone that is a member of a church that is in the council, when they are making that permit or the change to decide whether you can alter the use, I would hope that they would recuse themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Craig Dodson, followed by Joy Tursky.
Good evening. Craig Dodson, Newberry Park. I think you need a little higher microphone stand next time I'm here. I think this is a testament. I think most everybody knows that you guys have very limited power here. It's a testament to how much we feel about the Y that we're even here. When I found out through the grapevine, without any notification, without the Y asking for any contributions or saying we're in trouble, once I found that out, I called the head of the Y, I think Mr. Stone. He didn't call me back. I sent him an email. I said, "Mr. Stone, I will give you $2,000 as a contribution towards keeping this facility open." He did not respond again. I followed up with another one. I really like this facility, obviously, because I'm not a rich guy. And I said, "$5,000." Again, no response from Mr. Stone. But I know that's all beyond your purview. I get that, guys. But what isn't beyond your purview is what's highest and best use for the community. And I think the city should think long and hard about that because the highest and best use for that facility is not a church. Churches can be located in many places, but that facility is built, and we're an aging population. And a lot of us are going to need that facility and want that facility. Thanks.
Joy Tursky, followed by Patricia Thompson. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Fox. Good evening, council members. I'm Joy Tursky, I'm a Newberry Park resident and registered voter here to voice my concerns, along with many, about the pending loss of the community benefit to health and wellness that is threatened by the sale and closure of our YMCA. I've been a Y member for the past 10 years, along with my family, my husband, my two young children. We participate weekly, just last night, as well as donate to the Y's annual fundraisers. It's an important reason why we purchased our home in Newberry Park. Currently, the Y provides a community benefit of fitness, including an indoor pool. There is no other option for this within close driving. Losing this facility, as you've heard from many of our residents, is a huge loss to our diverse community, which is trying to attract and retain families, seniors, millennials, and others. Additionally, I'm very concerned about the ramifications of a different use at this site as there will be significant impacts on traffic, noise, and parking. Moreover, as a community member and parent of two young children, I'm concerned about the safety of our children. There have already been several hit by cars at the intersection between the Parisso Villages and the Sycamore Canyon Schools. And this has happened despite having a crossing guard during school transitions. Logically, increasing traffic flow threatens increased risk to our children. Finally, we've heard about the million-dollar donation of our tax dollars that the city gave so generously to fund the YMCA and its pool as a benefit to our diverse community. If this community resource is no longer to be available to our residents, our community should seek consideration for returning the city funds or for otherwise creating a place to establish this desired community benefit of recreation and the pool for all our diverse citizens. The YMCA is a community benefit partly funded by and able to be enjoyed by all our members of our diverse community. Losing a community resource such as this will, of course, depress property values, which in turn lowers the tax basis for our city to collect funds. We really do need to take time and focus our energies on what options exist. We've heard some interesting conversations and challenges to our group. And if the Y is truly unable to manage this facility, I do hope that our city, representing its residents, many of whom have spoken tonight, will seek to offer options to create the benefit of fitness and health for all the members of our diverse community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. This, you're Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, followed by Robert Gleason.
Mayor Fox, council members, good evening. My name is Patricia Thompson, and I am a Dos Vientos resident as well. We bought 2014 in the Dos Vientos community because of the central community support area. The Y was a critical decision-making asset for us to settle here. We would have bought another home in Thousand Oaks had we known the YMCA was not viable. Our real estate agent portrayed the community as a health and wellness zone. My husband has back challenges and uses the pool. And we use the bike paths, the hiking trails. And it's just a beautiful community, nestled in the foothills of our little mountains here. Weekend walks to the grocery store, Beano Vino, the table are done on Sundays or other days where hundreds of cars will now enter and exit through one of the two exits that surround the facility. The massive traffic will take place in an unreasonable demand and danger to the community, which has based its quality of life on health and wellness, providing trails, walking ways, sports, and the YMCA. One can certainly see the way this has developed as some sort of collusion with the seller and the potential owner. The notification of change was after much had transpired. The HOA, Y owners, and the potential church owners were all in a game of collusion to stop the community from having the true, clear path of what was going on. The traffic impact, noise, and loss to the community are not being considered. Please stop this sale action and force the Y owners to uphold their commitment to the community by selling to the national YMCA or a gym that will continue to support the wellness of the Dos Vientos community. And if that's not an option, I kind of like the idea of the community park being used as a more fitness facility as well because that, too, is nestled into the Dos Vientos area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Robert Gleason, followed by Feng Shen.
Hello, Robert Gleason, Dos Vientos, Newberry Park. I just want to thank our fire and EMT personnel through the last week and a half. It's been awesome to see those people in action. A lot of them live in Dos Vientos, so... I just want to voice my opposition to the sale. I know, Mr. McCoy, you're a community member in Dos Vientos. I know a lot of neighbors that know you. We are a welcoming community. And it's a special community. There's nothing like Dos Vientos. We moved up from Orange County and kept going up the 101, 101. I told my wife, "This is too far. This is too far. Where are we going?" And we ended up in this bowl community. It's a special place. It's filled with engineers, doctors, lawyers, musicians that don't want to live in L.A. It's a special community. And I think you all should recognize that. I've been there now six years. I'm from the Midwest. Go Steelers. But it's a special place. And I think the council members really need to recognize the disruption that this would cause. I can sympathize with a lot of seniors and adolescents that see the Y as the center of their universe. And as a father of two seven-year-old twins at Sycamore, I can testify, that is the center of the universe. It's not what I do in aerospace. So I would ask the council do their due diligence. Rob, we love you. We want you to be part of this. But there feels like a conflict of interest here, to be honest, that there's outside money at play, that, yes, we can't stop the sale of a private sale, but there is due diligence needed by the city council. There's environmental traffic. We have over 1,000 kids at Sycamore. That's the center of my universe. And I would just hope that you take that into account as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Feng Shen, followed by Bob Huber.
I am a resident of Dos Vientos. As many of my neighbors have said, have spoken about how YMCA has been a great place for us to get healthy and make friends. Dos Vientos is also a community with a diverse population of the whites, Asians, Hispanics, blacks, et cetera. On this issue of the sale of YMCA, we stand united. We want to fight. We want to do whatever we can to fight the sale of YMCA. And I really would appreciate your help to do anything that you can help to stop it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, if you could give a warm welcome, he is the Honorable Mayor of the city of Simi Valley, and he's here to visit us. Mayor of Simi Valley, Bob Huber. Bob, good evening.
Thank you. It's always a joy to be here in your reorganization meeting. I was poised to be here last week, but we all got our schedules changed because of our fire situation was coming down on our respective community. So congratulations on not getting impacted much by it as we were not impacted too much as well. As you know, I come every year in your reorganization meeting. And the reason I do that is because we, as citizens of Simi Valley, appreciate the relationship that we have with you. We formed this three sister cities a number of years ago where Moore Park, Thousand Oaks, and Simi Valley meet three or four times a year. The city managers and the mayors, and we talk about issues. And so, as I've done in the past years, this is my seventh year of doing it, I'm coming here to thank last year's mayor, Claudia, and how much we appreciate your service and how much our city appreciates you. And I have a certificate of recognition for Claudia. May it be known that this certificate of recognition has been presented to Claudia, Bill de la Peña, in appreciation for the partnership between our cities during your term as mayor. And thank you very much. I thank all of you. I enjoy seeing you all. I see you at different functions. And we just have this kindred spirit between our three cities here. And it's very, very important to all of us that we continue that spirit. And again, thank you for being a partner with us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
Bob, Mayor Huber, I want you to know that we were wearing our boutonnieres at the reorganization. Thank you.
I'm going to slip out now, but thank you all. Appreciate it. Have a nice rest of the meeting. Take care.
Okay.
And wonderful holiday season to you and your citizens.
Did you have any thoughts on the YMCA, Bob, while you were here?
A piece of trivia. In 1971, I was Chair of the Board of the Southeast Ventura County YMCA. There was only one, and it was here in Thousand Oaks. And that was the year that Joe McCray donated the land to the YMCA.
All right.
So I'm very passionate about the YMCA, but I'm not going to get in this mission.
So, okay. So you guys heard it. Call him on his cell phone. It's his fault. Our next speaker, Barbara Andreessen. Do we have Martha Farwell? Did Martha speak yet? Okay, Martha is going to be our next speaker, followed by Barbara Andreessen.
Good evening.
Good evening to all of you. Glad to see you. I appreciate your giving us the time at this early point of your meeting. I'm a resident of Dos Vientos, a member of the YMCA. I would echo most of the comments that have already been made in support of the very vital function that the YMCA has played in our community and how important it is to keep it, especially, of course, focusing on the enclosed swimming pool. I actually don't know of another one in all of Thousand Oaks. So that's the one. And since the city has never seen fit to build another one, And since the city has never seen fit to build another one, I kind of doubt they're going to do so, or the CRPD in the near future. So, when that one goes, that's pretty much it for our community and probably most of Thousand Oaks. I think what's significant to me, among other things, in this transaction is that the YMCA never made an effort to raise dues. They never made any effort this year, this last year, to increase fundraising or to, in fact, do any fundraising in Newberry Park. I had been involved in previous fundraising campaigns. We heard nothing about it in 2017. So, we have to assume that they had already decided they were going to dump the Y in Newberry Park, but of course, we didn't know about that. They didn't raise dues. I've been checking into equivalent facilities in order to find an equivalent service. It would require going to probably Gold's Gym. That would be the closest. About eight or 10 miles away from my house, 20-mile round trip to go to that gym for $60 a month, as opposed to $48 a month, which is what I've been paying at the Y. They could have easily raised it to $60 a month. That would have made up all of their shortfall, and there would be no problem. But I think this whole issue of not making enough money is a false issue. That's not the point. The point is to cash out on that capital asset and move those funds elsewhere. Now, I think this is a political problem. We need our political leaders to get their heads together and try to figure it out. What I see is collaboration here in removing a major asset from Newberry Park and taking it to another community. In fact, another community that's not only a different city, it's also a different county. So, I think that's a real problem, and I think it's going to be a political problem that will last a long time, needs to be dealt with. So, I would appreciate it if you would put your minds to work on it and see how we can maintain a health and fitness facility in Newberry Park where it is desperately needed. We're a long way from the senior center in Thousand Oaks. We're a long way from all the other facilities that are offered in Thousand Oaks, and we're in a very special, private kind of area that we like. But nonetheless, we have to deal with those distances, and we'd appreciate your helping us out to keep this YMCA available to us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Barbara Andreessen, followed by Kristen, looks like Remnitz, Remnitz. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Barbara Andreas, and I am also a member of the Dos Vientos community. I have just moved here about a year ago from Los Angeles, so I could take advantage of that wonderful asset that is the Y. I have been a member of the Y probably for the past 12 months, and I am essentially here today to support the community and its ability to try to hold on to that asset for those of us that are using it on a regular basis. It's an important asset to me. I am there at least several times a week. I enjoy the people that I've met there, and it's helped me sort of, you know, bind myself to the community. So, I am here to support my neighbors. I appreciate all the work that the Reynolds have done and Raimy Schwartz, and trying to bring this to your attention and asking for your help in a resolution to keeping the Y as a part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen, I don't know what...
Christine Remnitz.
Remnitz, and then followed, and Kristen will be Anau Dao.
Hi, I'm Christine Remnitz. I live in Newberry Park. I grew up here, went to Newberry Park High School, graduated in '98, and moved back finally in 2016. I didn't even know we had a Y because the Dos Vientos development wasn't built till after I already moved away. And it wasn't until the spring that I even found out that there was one, because there was a complete lack of communication and effort on the part of the management of the facility. So, what's happening here is that Newberry Park is losing a facility based on the mismanagement of the facility, which is not our fault. It's the fault of the people that have been put in place. And that is not only unfair, but it also has a couple of problems with the way that the sale has been done that are also illegal. And I have contacted the Attorney General's Office and am officially filing a complaint tomorrow and am filing a lawsuit because the property was not donated to the Y to be liquidated. It was donated to the community through the Y, and there are laws that protect it so that it would be here for the community, and it's not here for the Y to transfer funds to a facility that has been overly thought out, mismanaged, and very costly, and now wanting to use money that was donated to Newberry Park to try to finish because of their own mismanagement. I don't think it's quite fair that the property was listed on May 18th. In fact, it's not legal, that it was not advertised. And then on the 26th is the first time I've been able to find any information where it was revealed to the community that it was up for sale. And the CEO of the county-level YMCA denied that they were actually actively looking to sell it, denied that there were any bids that were available. And as soon as the 10 years came up, the 10 years the city council determined was necessary in order to allow a permit for the rest of the shopping center to be built, as soon as that came up, all of a sudden, there's a potential buyer that's purchased the property, and it's an escrow. And to me, that means that this was something that was planned out well in advance. It's a little too convenient, the timing. I'm going to be asking the Attorney General's Office to be investigating that, and I think it's going to show that there's been a lot of conflict of interest involved here. So, once again, don't get too comfortable, because we're just getting started.
Okay. Our last speaker is Anau Dao. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, mayors and members. I wasn't prepared to talk, but I feel like I should speak up for my son and many kids who go to the Sycamore Canyon. We moved to Dos Vientos about three years ago, so we're relatively new, but we became a member of Y since then. My son learned swimming from scratch. He can do 2,000 yards three days a week. He's the youngest kid in the swim team right now. So, I go to the Y three times a week, too. I spend about an hour and a half each time. So, all this is possible because the Y is so close to the school, so my son can walk up to the facility by himself. And if the Y were to, Y was too close, the closest pool is either in Camarillo or somewhere about 20, 30 minutes away. So, my son's swimming career just started, and it has to be stopped after the Y is closed. So, the Y claimed the facility is not profitable, but I strongly doubt it, because we're paying about $75, $76 a month for me and my son, and I can easily double that. I can, I don't mind paying $150, even $200 to keep the Y. So, I strongly urge someone to take a survey, pass out the survey to the members or to the members of Y or the community, see how much more they are willing to pay to keep this Y. So, as another member mentioned, it's more like a political problem than a financial issue. So, I agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comments for this evening. We do have eight additional written statement cards that are all concerning the YMCA, and they'll be added into the record. So, that concludes our public comment. Appreciate everybody coming down and sharing their perspective. We're going to move on with the agenda tonight, and that'll be Item 7. That's our consent calendar. Madam Clerk, if you could just wait, because it looks like we're going to have a... Yeah. Just give us a second to let the chamber clear out before we move on to the next item. Folks, we need to continue our council meeting, so if you could take your conversations outside, that would be great. You're not going to be able to do it, Dao. Just hold off, Cindy.
So, items... Okay.
All right, Mr. Rodriguez, consent calendar, Item 7.
I don't have any readings until after the consent is adopted, then I have three ordinances to read.
Okay. Do any of the council members want to call anything special on the consent calendar? Mr. Adam.
No one's calling anything?
No one's calling anything special.
All right, then I move the consent calendar.
All right. Mr. Adam moves the consent. Any discussion? Vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0 in your ordinance titles. I have three. Ordinance amending Title 4, Chapter 3, Article 2; Title 7, Chapter 2, Article 2; Title 9, Chapter 3, Article 9; Title 9, Chapter 3, Article 9; Title 9, Chapter 3, Article 10; Title 9, Chapter 3, Article 12 of Municipal Code and thereafter re-adopting said chapters of Municipal Code relating to City Engineer Authority, Ordinance Number 1637-N.S. Ordinance repealing and replacing in its entirety the provisions of Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and adding Article 6 of Chapter 10 of Title 3, Purchasing of Municipal Code, Ordinance Number 1638-N.S. And ordinance amending Chapter 3 of Title 6 of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code to establish regulations for construction and demolition waste management, Ordinance Number 1639-N.S.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And did you tabulate the vote? Okay. All right, that's approved. Okay, we're going to move to Item 8A. That's our public hearings. Madam Clerk, could you call Item 8A for a public hearing, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding cannabis business selection process and fees. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for the city council and official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Two individuals have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, each speaker will have five minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. We have two staff reports. We're going to hear from Mr. Town and Ms. Hurtado on this item. I don't know who's going first. Mr. Hurtado?
Hi, yes, thank you, Mayor Fox, council members. I'm here tonight with David McPherson with HDL Companies, Mark Town, Community Development Director, Patrick Heher, Assistant City Attorney, and I do want to also point out that we have Marjan Bizadi, who after this point will be the point of contact for applicants related to the commercial cannabis businesses. As you're well aware, the city council has been working on the cannabis topic since 2015. With the passage of Proposition 64 in November of 2016, staff was asked to research options for cannabis activity in Thousand Oaks. After nearly a year of research and public engagement, the city adopted an ordinance last month to allow one medical cannabis retailer and one cannabis testing lab in the city with certain restrictions. The ordinance requires a points-based selection process adopted by resolution. This presentation focuses on a proposed selection process for the two potential businesses, along with related items. So, this is a quick overview of what each step of the process is, the proposed process, and we'll go over each of these in more detail. So, prior to applying for a cannabis business permit, applicants should read the cannabis ordinance as well as state law. In addition, they will need to visit the Community Development Department to request a location certification for their proposed business location. This certification provides that their proposed location meets the requirements set forth in the cannabis ordinance. Applicants are also required to be fingerprinted and must submit their live scan receipt along with their application. About a week before the application period opens, an informational meeting will be held with all potential applicants. This informational meeting will allow applicants to obtain clarification on the process or application requirements. And we hope that by providing this opportunity to the applicants, they will have all the information needed to submit complete application packets. Applicants will submit their application form, background form, live scan receipt, location certification letter from Community Development, and required fees. As part of this application, all of the documentation required for the various phases must be submitted. These documents are listed in the procedure and include items such as a business plan, security plan, and community benefits. Descriptions of all the proposal items are included in the procedures to better assist So, the first phase of the selection process determines whether the applicant meets the minimum eligibility requirements to move on to Phase 2. The application packages will be reviewed to ensure all requirement documents have been submitted and are complete. Staff will ensure that the proposed location has been certified and that the owners have passed their background checks. Applicants who pass this phase of the process will then move on to Phase 2. Phase 2 is the initial ranking, and it consists of a thorough review of the application packet, and with scores assigned to each of the categories listed here, the applicants are ranked. Only those applicants who receive a score of 80% or higher are eligible to move on to Phase 3. Phase 3 consists of an interview and a site inspection of the applicant's proposed location. The city manager will form a selection committee, which will interview each applicant and assign scores based on the items listed here. Similar to Phase 2, each category has points assigned to it, and applicants will be scored on their proposal and knowledge in each area. After Phase 3 is complete, the scores from both Phases 2 and 3 will be combined, and the top candidates in each category will move forward to Phase 4. Prior to Phase 4, a meeting will be hosted by city staff, inviting property owners and occupants within 500 feet of the proposed location for each top applicant. This meeting is not factored into the determination of who gets the permit, but is intended for neighbors to voice any concerns prior to the city council meeting. Their concerns might be addressed with permit conditions that can be agreed upon and brought forth to city council with their recommendations. In Phase 4, the top candidates will be invited to a city council meeting, where the city manager will provide the final rankings and make a recommendation for each permit type. Although only one applicant in each category will be recommended by the city manager, council members will have the opportunity to review the rankings and ask questions of any of the other top applicants. During that meeting, council may choose to approve permits for the recommended applicants, any of the other top applicants, or not approve any permits, any applicants for the permits. During the development of the selection process, several options were discussed on the approach to Phase 4. Although we are recommending what was discussed on the previous slide, we thought it was important to include alternatives that were considered and can adjust the procedures based on your recommendations tonight. So, the first alternative was to have the city manager recommend the top applicant in each category, but only those two top candidates would be present at the city council meeting. Other finalists would not be invited to the city council meeting as part of Phase 4 and would not be available for questions. Alternative 2 is that the city manager does not provide a recommendation. Rather, the rankings are presented to city council, and the top candidates for each permit type will attend the city council meeting and be available for questions. And the last alternative is that the city council forms an ad hoc committee to review the top applicants prior to the city council meeting and makes the recommendation to city So, we have other items that are included in tonight's presentations. We'll move forward with those. So, first, user fees. As part of the application and selection process, user fees were developed for your consideration, and were done so in accordance with the city council's full cost recovery policy. The proposed fees take into account both staff time and contracted services. Applicants only pay for the phases that they participate in, and some of the costs will be recovered over multiple years. Businesses in the city pay a gross receipts tax, and cannabis businesses would be no different. The city's business tax is considered low. For example, a business with $1 million in gross receipts pays annual business tax of $350, or 0.035%. Cannabis businesses can be taxed at a separate higher rate with voter approval in a general election. For a measure to be included on the November 2018 ballot, the city would need to submit a signed resolution to the county by the end of June. The recommended tax amount would be anywhere from 4% to 6%. Assuming a 5% tax rate, the amount of tax dollars that would be available for public services, such as police and libraries, would be considerably higher. If we consider that same $1 million gross receipts that would currently generate annual business tax of $350, a 5% tax would generate... services such as police and libraries would be considerably higher. If we consider that same $1 million gross receipts that would currently generate annual business tax of $350, a 5% tax would generate $50,000. Given that this is a new industry to the city and we don't know what kind of expansion we'll be seeing in the next 20 to 30 years, it is recommended that the tax measure be placed on the ballot sooner than later. As part of the background check process, applicants will be required to undergo LiveScan fingerprinting to obtain DOJ and FBI criminal history. In order for agencies to request services for this new license type, the city must provide a signed resolution authorizing this activity. Also, we are proposing an amendment to the contract with HDL Companies to assist the city with implementation of the selection process, provide audit and compliance services for those selected cannabis businesses, and continue to provide technical expertise. HDL has provided tremendous value to the city during this process in educating staff and holding our hands through this complex issue. We have an approximate timeline for the selection process, and it's only an estimate at this point. We did provide a conservative estimate, being that this is a new process to the city, but it is very possible that some of these phases might move much more quickly than we anticipate. And I just want to display that we are working on website. We intend to have every piece of information that we are presenting here tonight and then other links to government agencies that might provide more information, such as the state law and so forth, and a copy of the cannabis ordinance. So we're working on putting something together that will be very user-friendly for our citizens and for potential applicants. So as far as the recommendations for tonight, recommendation number one is to adopt the resolution approving the application selection process and fees. And if council has any concerns with any of the areas such as ranking, the rankings of fees, or the alternatives that were presented tonight, this is the area that you will address this. Recommendation number two is simply a formality that will allow our police department to receive criminal history results from the DOJ and the FBI related to cannabis businesses. Recommendation number three, at this time, we are simply looking for any interest from the City Council to have staff perform more research on a tax measure. You're not approving anything tonight. We're just looking to see if you would like us to come back at a later date to propose something to you at that time. Recommendations four and five relate to the contract with HDL Companies. As previously mentioned, we have received excellent service from Mr. McPherson and his colleagues. We recommend continuing to utilize our services to take us through the next, the first few years of this process, and then we can evaluate our needs after that time. Should council desire staff to issue a request for proposal to see other companies that might be available for these services, that can certainly be done, but there are only a small number of companies offering those services, and the RFP process will take about three to four months to complete and will extend our timeline. Recommendation number six is simply a formality to appropriate the anticipated funds in the city budget. And we are available for questions.
Questions for Ms. Hurtado from the council. Oh, I got it. Mr. Adam, you are first up.
No, thank you, Mayor Fox. Hello, everybody. Maybe it's too early to tell, but do we have any idea what other communities are charging for the business tax for this type of business?
We do. We have the rates that we're recommending here as far as for the discussion purpose of four to six, which when we did the workshop for you was about the state average of almost most cities, if you take the average of the whole state. You had some that were two or three years old that were on a higher rate, but they've come down significantly since November of 2016 in that range of 4% to 6%.
Okay, so there's a precedent of 4% to 6%. All right, that's good to know. Hey, and just this business of, after the applicants go through these three rather exhaustive phases, and then the fourth phase, it's suggested to us that the city manager recommend an operator, but is that the right word? I see it more as the city manager would be reporting to us the strongest finalists that have gotten, made their way through this phase, these three phases.
Yeah, you could see it either way that, but basically what it's from the objective process or the completion of the process through a procedure that you've approved and adopted, the outcome of that is basically, yes, whoever's number one is who we'd probably recommend based on that outcome.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, well, I just don't see it as the city manager coming before us and saying, "I recommend this operator, I recommend that operator." It's more to me that he come before us and say, "Here's the three, let's say, three strongest finalists for you as the city council to take a look at." Isn't that what we're getting at here?
Yes, and that's, and that was one of the options to provide to you versus just saying, "Here, here's number one, here's what we're saying, was the top candidate." Were we giving you the option, if that's your desire, to bring you to the top three, and then you make the final decision as one of the options?
Yeah, and I would certainly think that considering the cost of this process, you know, the finalists are going to have to be substantial operators, because if I'm reading this right, it's going to cost $30,000 just to get through the process.
Right, and we did have the alternatives to Phase Four because this was something that we struggled with a little bit to present to you the solution that might fit our city best. So I did put back on the screen the alternative. So I believe the one that you were talking about was number two, where the city manager does not provide a recommendation but rather just brings back the finalists for each permit type, and that way, City Council has the opportunity to review those rankings and make that decision without a recommendation from the city manager.
I think I was. All right, thank you.
Ms. Bill De La Pena?
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Good evening. I do have a question regarding the scoring of the candidates and as to who will make their recommendations and so forth for Phase Four. Is it possible to have the city manager, it says here, he would be presenting one recommendation per category, so that would be just two people that we would be interviewing, and if we didn't like them, then we would have to go back, correct? However, go ahead.
Actually, in our recommended procedure, the city manager would recommend the top applicant for each permit type, but the other top candidates, so let's say we had two or three for each permit type, and we don't know where the scoring will lead us to get to that number. The, all of the top applicants will be here, you'll have access to the information provided, and you'll have the opportunity to interview, talk to those candidates, ask questions at that time, and it could very well be that you decide number two is better than number one. You don't agree with the city manager's recommendation on the rankings, and you could select to approve applicant number two or applicant number three.
Well, what new information, if any, would the council receive that hasn't already been implemented or used in the scoring system? I mean, when we receive a recommendation from the city manager, then I'm wondering what else could be there that would change the mind of the City Council? If there is, we have, we have a score, say there is a tie, or it's off by a point, what would we need in order to go against a recommendation of the city manager?
Well, that would be a policy decision, but part of it could be is that, let's say, candidate number one may had the second best proposed location but had a very solid application for other areas to put him above the other, but you may have a concern with that location as a council that you feel more comfortable that candidate number two may be a more viable location and therefore is a better fit for your community than candidate number one based on the outcome of the scoring.
Very good, thank you. Well, at this point, I'm really leaning toward the Phase Four, not the alternative Phase Four, but I'm really leaning toward the recommendations from the city manager to the City Council rather than forming an ad hoc committee or so, because I believe that the more transparency there is out in the open with questioning some of the applicants, the better for the community. Thank you.
Any more questions from the council? I didn't see anybody. Oh, Mr. Price.
Yeah, very quickly, I just, Mr. McPherson, if you could just explain to the viewing public here, this 15% excise tax that's being charged by the state and why it is that we're not eligible for any of that.
Sure, so the 15% excise tax is what was in Prop 64 that goes to the state for breakdown of funding and other resources, and it's done in buckets for different agencies and different criteria. Some of it's for studies that are being made, some of it's going to be for public safety training, and so forth in that. The reason the city would not be eligible at this point is because it also requires that you not ban retail or cultivation and because of your, or other activities, including outdoor or personal cultivation. And such, the city has taken the position to ban part of that, they would not be eligible for grant funds from that excise tax.
Thank you, and a question regarding the imposition of a higher business tax. Has there been any data yet that you've seen that suggests, I know that you said that the range is somewhere to 4% to 6%, but there's, there was a suggestion made by a number of our speakers at earlier meetings that if we tax it too much, it's just going to drive, drive it back underground. And has there been any information related to that?
Sure, and there's the validity of that is that when you're looking at some agencies like Santa Barbara, that was as high as 20%, even 10% in the old days was a reasonable high tax. Today, it's not acceptable tolerance level. That's why that pain point of 4% to 6% is an acceptable tolerance level, but when you move above that, then that starts causing a burden, and where the cumulative tax for the burden of not only the industry but also the end user or consumer of that, cumulative gets to 30%. By adding the 15% and another thing, you can get 35%, 40%. So keeping it in that range keeps it under the total totality of 30%, which is an acceptable range at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Mr. Adam, you have some follow-up questions?
I do, just a quick question, just for a point of clarity. If I'm not mistaken, medical marijuana is exempt from sales tax, is it not, unlike recreational marijuana?
So medical marijuana is exempt for those individuals that have an HNS 11362.71 card. There is less than 1% of the consumers have that card and are exempt from sales tax.
Less than 1%?
Yes, there were sixty, there were before November of 2016, 6,800 people. Today, there's probably less than 1,500 statewide.
Oh, okay. Well, that's not a very big number, is it? All right, thank you.
No more questions from the council. We have two public comment cards on this item. Our first speaker is Joe Kyle, who will be followed by J.C. Simmons. Good evening, Mr. Kyle, looking sharp with the red tie.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fox, Mayor Pro-Tan McCoy, City Council members and city staff. I would like to say congratulations to Mayor Fox and Mayor Pro-Tan McCoy. It's been a long, now almost two years. I would first like to say the multiple-phase process can potentially push out what be, what would be multiple, would be good possible, possible good actors, excuse me. You guys can enact a point-based system with less phases as to not run up the application total. I do applaud the local enterprises section asking for Thousand Oaks or Ventura County locals. We started this conversation, I said, almost two years ago with Joel Ismail, continued the conversation with Claudia as mayor, and now we will continue the conversation with Mayor Fox. I hope the City Council stays open to allowing more than one dispensary as to not allow a locally mandated monopoly and to allow medical patients to have more than one option, not only in the location they're going to, but the differences of medicines that different stores can carry. This is the, only the beginning of the conversation now that we're allowing an actual dispensary. The people and the patients are now only going to come out more, and the City Council will hear complaints and different issues that come from only allowing one dispensary. I hope that the City Council looks to allowing different avenues, such as delivery services that are licensed from other municipalities, allowing to terminate and open up and allow the accessibility for patients that truly can't even get out of the house even though there is safe access now within this city. If Mr. McPherson could please clarify, so the city were to allow outdoor cultivation, that they would get a portion of that 15% excise tax, if that is true? Not only outdoor cultivation of personal, but is that also a commercial cultivation? And then also, what you had stated about the county-issued ID card, only 1% of patients have those, but that will be going up because with Prop 64, it limited to $100, so now patients have to look at, is the local amount of the sales tax here going to weigh, outweigh that $100 for that county card? So that percentage of medical patients that have that county card is going to go up because before it was a voluntary program. Now it's not so voluntary. It's still voluntary, but there's cost savings involved there. So that number will start to go up. So it could be that the city sees the same amount of sales in the city, but because those patients are getting their county card, now the portion of sales tax that the city gets back doesn't, is no longer existent because those people now have that county card. So if the city were to, I know the City Council did not want to explore that avenue, but there is no out of recreational sales. You cannot ever get out of that. So we can continue down this road of medical and see how it goes and go from there if the council were to possibly want to go there. I know that is not an avenue that the city wants to go, and for now, I'll stick with allowing more than one dispensary. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kyle. Our last speaker on this item is J.C. Simmons. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Thousand Oaks. Good evening, City Council. J.C. Simmons, resident of Newbury Park. I came to you here in the spring to speak about the need for medical marijuana dispensary. I am a medical marijuana user for my arthritis. It's great, certainly better than the opioids or other painkillers. I think it's kind of blindfolded to be sitting here with approval for one facility for dispensing in a city of 120,000 people. As I said the last time I was here, for some strange reason, there's five dispensaries with one and a half blocks of the Fallbrook exit off the freeway in the West Valley, and I think the City Council should look at at least having the opportunity to have two or three facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our speaker cards. We're going to go back to staff. Is there any follow-up items from city staff before we close the public hearing?
So just wanted to clarify Mr. Kyle's comment about the exemptions will go up. We are almost a year past, and it has gone down. It has not gone up. So there is no statistics evidence indicating the sales tax exemptions will go up to this date.
All right. No further questions? Oh, Ms. Bill De La Pena?
Yes, could you explain the difference between what Mr. Kyle mentioned about the county cards?
Sure, so in the past, different counties can charge a higher rate, because some of them are paying, charging almost as much as $250. Instead of, in Prop 64, it restricted them that they cannot charge a fee to exceed $100. The reason why we don't see a rush to people doing this, because primary people got that card more of a defense for arrest if they were arrested, if they were in possession of more than one ounce of cannabis, and they would have that card if they needed that as part of their medicine. Most people don't do that now because you would almost have to purchase 200,000, excuse me, $2,000 annually just to break even on what you're going to benefit from the tax. So people aren't doing it for the incentive of trying to do the tax. They don't see it as an effective tool just to get that card anymore.
I was ready to make a motion if...
I want to ask a quick question, if it's okay.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I wanted to know, on the 15% excise tax with the four buckets you were speaking of, those are grant-related, is that going to be available to law enforcement statewide? I know that we wouldn't be able to apply for a grant in relation to that.
Yeah, so the different buckets, part of it will go to research, 20% will go to research to both UC Davis and UC San Diego for research statistical and impacts of social issues, health issues, and things of that nature, and impacts of usage of the product. The other 20% will go to research to look at the benefits of actual agriculture product. And then the Highway Patrol will get a portion of that funded directly, but it's not even grant money, it's specific for training for law enforcement and training related to impaired driving associated with that and technology associated with that. But from a local level, there is a grant segment of that that you would not be eligible due to your restrictions.
Understood, thank you.
Ms. Bill De La Pena?
The motion I'm making is to approve the staff recommendations one through four with the Phase Four as originally proposed, not the alternative phase.
Let me just close the public hearing first.
Okay.
All right, no more speakers, no more questions from the council. There is no rebuttal for tonight's public hearing, so with that, we'll close the public hearing, and the chair will entertain a motion or discussion.
Yes, it's one through six. I'm sorry, my little window only went through four, but I meant one through six. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Bill DeLaupena moves items one through six. Discussion on the motion, we'll start with Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Yeah, I agree, no ad hoc committee. Time-consuming and probably not that transparent. As far as the business tax, yeah, let the staff research it. If it goes to the vote of the people, great. And finally, I did, the one, I don't know if this is a sticking point or not, but I have a feeling this is going to be a very competitive process, and there could be a lot of money at stake here for a lot of people. And I just don't want to get our city manager caught in a position where he's quote-unquote recommending to us certain parties. I'd rather that, and I have no problem with the city manager coming forth with different choices, but maybe that number two looks a little bit better where he would just bring forth, you know, the finalists to us, and we would make the decision. We would make the decision.
I think Ms. Hurtado mentioned that there will be others, there will be other candidates available for questioning that evening, not just two finalists. I mean, he can certainly make a recommendation. We will have the score sheet available, the final ranking, and with more than two, if we have four finalists available, two per category, that's something we can certainly look at, and those candidates will be available according to, if I understood you correctly, they will be available for the council members to question.
Mr. Adam, that is correct.
Maybe I'm just getting hung up on the word recommendation. Maybe the city manager would like to address that.
Sure, and I'll have Ms. Hurtado chime in as well. She's been working quite diligently on this. This is obviously uncharted waters for all of us. We do a lot of RFPs in our business and local government, but very few of those are to grant the ability to open and run a business in a community. So that's why we presented the options to you tonight, because it's really an opportunity for the council to kind of weigh in and give us guidance. We don't know how this is going to play out. There could be a clear number one, and then there could be a lot of granularity between one, two, three, and so on. So we just don't know, but that's why we presented the options before. I'm comfortable with whatever direction the council decides, and to a degree, it's semantics, Councilman Radom, but, you know, whether you prefer to have a singular candidate that's fronted and then additional finalists available for consideration, or to have open consideration of three candidates, that's really up to the council.
Yeah, I have no problem getting two candidates per category. That's fine. I'm not sure how many we will receive, but certainly that's something that's workable rather than interviewing 10 different people.
Oh, no, that would be too many.
Yeah.
I agree. What do all my fellow council members think about that?
Mr. Price, I think you're next up.
Thank you. My interest would lie in alternative number two as well, to not put the city manager in the position of making a singular recommendation to us and then have the others available to us should we desire to ask questions of them. Alternative number two seems to me to provide us with the top-ranking candidates and whether they're ranked in numerical order or not. We are the final decision-makers based on questioning that we would do, we would conduct of each one of those applicants after a careful review of their applications, as well as any questions that might come up. So, you know, you asked the question earlier, what additional information might we be privy to that the city manager wouldn't have? And I could see where, after reviewing the applications, that I might have questions that weren't asked or weren't fully explored during the review process. And that could yield, that question could yield additional information that might be helpful to those of us rendering a decision.
So what I'm hearing is that you would like to replace point two or item number two under phase four with item number two of the alternatives to phase four?
Yes.
Could you put that back up on the screen, please?
As long as you guys are having this discussion, just let me call your attention. Item number three, we need to provide a direction on the tax at what level and give some direction to staff on that.
I thought that was four to six percent, so those will be...
Just incorporate that, okay, very good.
Yep.
Could you put that alternative back on the screen, please? The one Mr. Price was talking about?
All right, so just to clarify, this is our recommendation. So the recommendation that we have before you is that the selection committee, final review and evaluation is presented to city council. The city manager does make a recommendation to city council, but each of the top applicants, it might be two, it might be three for each category, will be available for questions if there are concerns in the rankings that, you know, as Mr. McPherson spoke about, the location, something that, you know, is of concern to council. The alternatives are listed here. So again, the first one is that the city manager recommends the top applicant and no other applicants are available. Sounds like this isn't an avenue that you're exploring. It does seem that number two is the other option that you may be exploring, where the city manager does not provide a recommendation. The information is provided to city council, and each permit type, you'll have the opportunity to review the candidates and ask questions without having that city manager recommendation of the top candidate.
So that recommendation number two in alternative phase really is the same as recommendation two in phase four minus the word recommendation. So we can just strike the word recommendation from that. That's fine. So I will amend the motion to read that we will approve as-is, one through six, but strike the word recommendation from point number two.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify for item number three on providing direction to staff, I just want to make it clear for the record that the direction to staff would be to analyze a possible ballot measure for the November 2018 general election ballot, including an analysis of an appropriate tax range of about four to six percent, but will rely on the consultant for that, and a timeline and a process.
So we're going with alternative number two?
Yes, basically, it's the same as what is described in the phase four, but it deletes the word recommendation. In other words, the city manager will not make recommendations, but will present the highest-ranking finalists.
Thank you.
So Ms. Bill DeLaupena is recommending that we strike the word recommendation per her recommendation? Okay, I think it's clear.
Per my colleagues' recommendations.
Totally clear.
I'd like to recommend that.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on this item? All right, Madam Clerk, prepare the vote.
That motion passes 5-0.
All right, that is approved. We'll move to item 8B. That's our next public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you call item 8B for a public hearing, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8B regarding state-mandated business license fee for disabled access. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and at this time, we have no public speaker cards.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Ms. Hurtado?
You get me again, sorry. I apologize. Have to listen to me for a couple more minutes. It'll be brief, though. So this presentation, get in here. This presentation proposes amending a fee or revising a fee in the citywide user fee manual for a state-mandated business license fee for disabled access and budget appropriation for the anticipated revenue. To provide a little background, state legislature began requiring cities to collect an additional $1 disabled access fee on every business tax certificate or business license, with 30 cents going to this Division of State Architect and 70 cents remaining with the city to assist funding training for building inspectors to become certified access specialists. Assembly Bill 1379 was recently passed by state legislature and goes into effect January 1st. The fee increases the disabled access fee to $4 per business tax certificate, with the Division of State Architect receiving 40 cents and the city retaining $3.60. Due to the increase of this fee, additional revenue will be received by the city. In addition to training building inspectors, staff has identified other ways to put the funds to use, such as facilitating training seminars for members of the building community, creating brochures with ADA requirements, and providing free ADA consultations, et cetera. So our recommendations today are to adopt the resolution approving the state-mandated business license fee for the disabled access to be revised in the citywide user fee manual, and approve additional budget appropriation to increase the general revenue budget in the amount of $40,000. And I am available for questions.
All right, questions for Ms. Hurtado? We have no speaker cards on this item. Mr. Price? Okay, then we're going to close the public hearing, and the desk is open for a motion or discussion. Mr. Price?
Yes, I'm going to move staff's recommendation that we abide by the state's mandated rule.
All right, Mr. Price moves discussion on his motion. Hearing done. Madam Clerk, prepare the vote.
The motion passes 5-0.
That is approved. That concludes our public hearing for tonight, and we'll move to item 9A. That's the committee and commission report on the council on aging. And for that report, we have Dr. Karen Gorbak, who's the chair of the council of aging. Madam Chair, good evening.
Good evening.
You can pull the mic down a little bit if you like.
Yeah, I will, I will, thank you very much. And I'll need the clicker for the PowerPoint. Good evening, Mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Karen Gorbak, and I'm chair of the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging. I'm here tonight to present our annual report with an added bonus. But first, I would like to congratulate Mayor Fox on your new position, and I would also like to thank you, Mayor Fox, for your work in the fire service during these terrible firestorms that have been plaguing Southern California. Your time and sacrifice are sincerely appreciated. Thank you. And then I would like to recognize the commissioners on the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging who are here this evening. I'd like you to stand, please, all of you. And I just want to thank all of you publicly for all the work that you do, because we've had a very busy year and could not have done any of it without all of your time and expertise. So thank you. For those in the audience who don't know, the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging is an advisory committee for the Thousand Oaks City Council. We serve as a linking pin between seniors and local government. We are the eyes and ears that keep the council apprised of issues that are important for seniors and their families. We accomplish this through the following. We maintain the Conejo Connections webpages, which has over 450 entries on a variety of services, including the areas of finance, education, caregiving, transportation, and others. All you have to do is Google Conejo Connections, and it will take you to a link that will take you right to those pages. It's really remarkable, wonderful resource. We also provide outreach to the community. We serve as community liaisons on a variety of boards. We research and report on topics of interest to seniors, and we keep the city council informed of such. This year, outreach consisted of the following. We hosted booths at the Wellness Fest, Rotary Street Fair, and the Senior Summit. We asked Commissioner Hagie to present information about the COA throughout the community, including at the Kiwanis, the University Village, St. Julie Billyard Owls Group, and the Temple Adot Elohim Seniors. We supported the SAMP transit team in partnership with Mobility Management Partners, TO Transit Staff, and MV Transit to conduct transit workshops at the Goble Center. We invited guest speakers to address us during monthly televised meetings on topics such as Medicare changes, bone and nutrition health, advanced care planning, genealogy, and other topics of interest to seniors and their families. Each liaison among our commissioners brings important information to the public during our televised meetings on programs available for seniors and their families throughout Ventura County. Further, each commissioner takes the responsibility of researching topics of interest, such as in the areas of education, health, fraud, social services, and then reports on those at our televised meetings. We also plan and implement the Senior of the Year Award Banquet, and this year awarded Harry Norkin the designation of Senior of the Decade, and that was a great evening. Wow. Finally, we research topics trending in the area of aging, and this past year, we took special note of the rapid growth of the senior demographic around the world and the response of the World Health Organization. And like the rest of the world, Thousand Oaks is aging. According to the Southern California Association of Governments Regional Council, the 65-plus age group experienced the largest increase in share of population over the last 16 years. Now, rather than simply identify this phenomenon, the World Health Organization developed guidelines for aging cities to address their demographics and become more age-friendly or livable. They did this by identifying what they call the eight domains of age-friendly cities, which are based on a World Health Organization Global Age Friendly Project conducted in 33 cities across 22 countries. The World Health Organization coordinates with affiliates in each country to promote age-friendly, livable communities. In the United States, that affiliate is AARP. Livability is an updated term for age-friendly. It means a community is safe, secure, affordable, and has options for employment, for housing, education, medical care, leisure activities, and community engagements for residents of all ages at all stages of life, all ages at all stages of life. So here are the eight domains of livability according to the World Health Organization. Many of these domains were addressed by the 2009 Senior Adult Master Plan. Most are self-explanatory, but let me go over a few which are not. Respect and social inclusion relates to a number of elements, including the extent to which older individuals are regularly consulted by public, voluntary, and commercial services on how to serve them better, and the extent to which older individuals are visible in the media and are depicted positively and without stereotyping. Civic participation and employment refers to a number of elements, including how well a wide range and appropriately paid work opportunities for seniors are promoted. Communication and information refers to wide public access to computers and the internet at minimal or no charge in public places, such as government offices, community centers, and libraries. Now, in a parallel initiative to the World Health Organization's Domains of Livability, the AARP Public Policy Institute created an online livability index to measure livability for communities throughout the country based on a possible 100 points. These are the livability scores out of 100 for Thousand Oaks and surrounding cities. As you see, they are pretty consistent. Each total score is an average of seven components closely related to the World Health Organization's Domains of Livability. These are the individual domain scores, which give Thousand Oaks the average of 53. So now, if you go to the online livability index and type in Thousand Oaks, you're going to get a screen that looks somewhat like this, and Thousand Oaks is at the top, and here's our score of 53. And then beneath that are the individual domain... And then beneath that are the individual domains with the individual scores next to them that you saw on the prior PowerPoint screen. So I take a look at those, and oh, I want to know more information about health, because that's the highest score that came out. That received a 74. So I click on health, and it brings up the definition of what this particular index means by a healthy community. And then I can click on the little widget in front of healthy behaviors, and this one happens to be about smoking prevalence. And here we go, on the next page. We have more information about smoking in Thousand Oaks, and it says 13.1% of people smoke regularly. If I wanted to know where this information came from, I simply look down further on the right side of this page, and I can see the database that it came from. So the online livability score index gives us, provides, an interesting snapshot of a community's livability. But why is the Council on Aging studying livability to begin with? We feel that joining the AARP network of age-friendly, livable communities is the next logical step in the evolution of the Senior Adult Master Plan, and we feel it's important, because this designation focuses on continuous improvement in our city for residents of all ages. Cities throughout the country and around the world are being recognized as age-friendly, and Thousand Oaks can be next. Many cities and counties throughout California are joining the AARP age-friendly network. Here they are. Once again, a livable community is a vibrant, healthy place to live throughout all stages of life. Why become an age-friendly city? What are the economics of livability? In our report you have in front of you, our portfolio, we've included a tab that's titled "Follow the Money," which includes case studies on the positive impact of age-friendly policies on the economy of various communities. For instance, according to Dr. Margaret Neal, who is the Director of the Institute on Aging at Portland State University, and her colleague, Dr. Alan De La Torre, older adults are consumers, often with more discretionary income than when they were young. Older adults often work in both paid and volunteer employment, contributing to the economy of their cities and maximizing resources. And boy, is this ever prevalent in Thousand Oaks, where there are more than 1,200 seniors contributing to both for-profit and nonprofit services and businesses every year. Pretty amazing place. Older adults are entrepreneurs, twice as likely as millennials to start a new business, according to a Gallup poll. Older adults often pay property taxes but use fewer high-dollar public services, like Is that the steps? Did I get mixed up here? Okay, okay. Steps. Steps toward age-friendly certification include the following. First, to obtain the political commitment of the community's elected officials. Then organize the stakeholders, because a successful, age-friendly initiative is based on broad collaboration. Third is to conduct an assessment and identify the needs with regard to the World Health Organization's eight domains of livability, and you do this within the first two years of your application. The fourth is to establish an advisory committee that includes, but is not limited to, older adults. The fifth is to develop a five-year, community-wide action plan based on the assessment findings. And then sixth, to implement the plan. And then finally, to evaluate your plan and work on continuous improvement. The Council on Aging Livable Communities Subcommittee has already met with representatives from stakeholders who support this project and will serve on the steering committee, including the Greater Conejo Chamber of Commerce, California Lutheran University, Conejo Recreation and Park District, the Conejo Valley Unified School District. Potential costs. Is that? There we go. Now, we do anticipate some costs involved in conducting an impartial baseline needs assessment and gap analysis with regard to the eight domains of livability, as well as staff costs associated with organizing a steering committee and project administration. While we believe that working with CLU is an advantage and a valuable partnership, a couple weeks ago, I spoke to a senior analyst at the AARP Public Policy Institute in DC, excuse me. And she indicated that in order to save money, we may utilize the information already collected in the AARP Livability Index. And then she recommended that we could supplement this with other types of research, such as a city's community attitude survey, and then focus groups for qualitative data. And this would significantly reduce costs in terms of a baseline assessment. If we utilize the CLU proposal, which I believe you have also, they will do the needs assessment and the analysis. Then following the analysis, a steering committee of stakeholders will decide which domains to address, and then develop an action plan to return to city council and partner agencies for approval. If we utilize existing data and focus group information, the steering committee of stakeholders and administrative support would start earlier, and assist in the analysis of data as well as the development of an action plan. And of course, administrative support would be necessary throughout for program administration. So the Council on Aging welcomes additional discussions with city council members and city staff regarding the next steps toward AARP certification as an age-friendly, livable We are recommending tonight that the city council receive our report and seriously consider committing to obtaining the age-friendly, livable designation as a 2018-19 city council Thank you. And are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Gorbak. Questions for Dr. Gorbak? Ms. Bill De La Pena.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Karen, appreciate it. Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned that in the proposed research that it is recommended to use some of the work already done by the AARP Livable Communities and the City Attitude Survey. What about the Senior Master Plan that you have all worked so hard on?
We look at that every year, and that absolutely contains a wealth of information. For instance, one of the domains of livability is transportation. Look at all the wonderful work that's been done in Thousand Oaks via the SAMP in the area of transportation. People not only learn about public transportation at the Goble Center, they bring buses out and show people how to get on them and exactly how to use them. And then here's another great example. One of the areas of the SAMP had to do with volunteerism. Out of that grew a very active group that eventually became the Village-to-Village nonprofit organization that is operating in Thousand Oaks, whose goal it is to help people stay in their homes as long as possible. And so you're absolutely correct that the information from SAMP would absolutely be used in our baseline assessments. It's been invaluable, I think, to the growth of the city.
Thank you. The other question I have is regarding the livability score. It mentions Thousand Oaks. It mentions other cities. And then it also mentions Westlake Village and Newberry Park. Now, Newberry Park is part of Thousand Oaks, obviously, and Westlake Village, I'm assuming, refers to the Westlake Village portion of Thousand Oaks rather than the city of Westlake Village in LA County? So if those scores were to be combined, might the overall Thousand Oaks score be higher?
It could be, but you know, I think people, you know, I spoke, because I had a lot of questions, very honestly, about this survey. I come from an academic background, and when I take a look at figures like this, I'm thinking, where are they coming from? What's going on here? So I made a lot of phone calls till I got to the right person at the AARP Public Policy Institute. And she said that people like to put in the names of their communities and see what their scores are. But when the Public Policy Institute used different databases to determine these scores, sometimes you can't get to the individual community. Sometimes the database was county-wide, right? Sometimes the database was to your nearest metropolitan area, which is Los Angeles. So you could certainly combine Westlake Village, Thousand Oaks, and Newberry Park, but I don't think the numbers would change that much. But they do, they say people want to look at their own individual neighborhoods and see what their scores are.
And then my final question is, how long do you think might this plan take in terms of implementing, I mean proposing it, and by the time you come back to the council for a full proposal?
The recommendation by AARP is to do your research and do your plan in two years, within two years. And that's what I would aim for. Two years.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, hearing end. Thank you, doctor. Very thorough report. We appreciate it. As we thank all the members of the Council on Aging. You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
All right, we have two items for council consideration. What's the pleasure of the council? Ms. Bill De La Pena.
Move approval of the recommendations by the Council on Aging.
Okay, Ms. Bill, that's Items 1 and 2?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Bill De La Pena moves Items 1 and 2. Mr. Adam, discussion.
Yeah, just a comment, if I may, please. And thank you so much, Council of Aging. I know how committed and passionate you are about seniors in our community, and I really appreciate your work. Just so we all know, this designation is not to be taken lightly. There's a lot of work involved here. It can take up to five years to get this designation. And in fact, I looked into this a little bit deeper, and I, there's a fellow by the name of Rodney Harrell, who's the head of this designation committee through AARP. And he was asked, you know, why are so few cities receiving this designation? And here's what he said. He says, "Because it's a serious application and assessment process which can take years." Quote, all right? He says, "It's not as easy as signing a pledge, as signing a pledge or saying you're going to do something. A community has to have the capacity to actually do this." So I'm not saying it's, you know, a bad idea. I'm just saying it's not like signing a pledge and saying, "Okay, we'll be this and you're that." I mean, you're talking about infrastructure improvements. You're talking about transportation improvements. You're talking about a lot of things here. And that's why so few cities have actually entered into this. I think it's less than 1% in the entire United States. It's about 3% in the state of California. So all I'm saying is that before we get too into this, deeply into this, I want staff to take a look at it and see what we're looking at as far as staff time, as far as costs, and what's involved here before we, you know, let a third party set a benchmark as to how certain things are run here in the city. Third party meaning AARP and the World Health Organization. So I just think it takes a little more delving into before we commit to something like this. But I appreciate you bringing it to us. I think it's a great idea to take a look at. And as far as making it a priority for the city council, we set our priorities sometime next year, so that would remain to be seen. That's going to be a whole nother debate and what those 10 priorities. We just get 10, so we'll have to see how that works itself out. Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I certainly agree with Mr. Adam here that, you know, when I was reading the staff report and during your presentation here, you talked about the needs, the potential costs, the needs assessment analysis, steering committee, and the administrative report. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't have staff take a look at what is required in order to obtain this designation and how much staff time that is going to require. I also think it'd be important that we engage CRPD, since they are the providers of much of this services. So those are my comments.
Mr. McCoy.
As a result of your vigilance and efforts, my in-laws want to move here. And I like my in-laws, so thank you.
All right. Ms. Bill De La Pena's motion was for Items 1 and 2. Just for the record, one is to consider the age-friendly livability designation. Is it fair to say that your intent was to refer that to staff or further staff development?
Yes, it says to consider the age-friendly livability designation for the council priority. And I must say that we have many topics as our council goals and many subtopics. And I'm sure there, I shouldn't say I'm sure, but there is a possibility that that may be one of the subtopics. I mean, all of our council goals affect the livability of our city. So it's almost redundant to do this, because everything we do, we do in mind with everybody in our city. It also says to receive Council on Aging Annual Report and Age-Friendly Livability Community Portfolio. We're not really spending any money just yet. We're looking at considering doing this.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, prepare the vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
That is approved. Move to Item 9B. That's the fiscal year 2017-2018 Community Enhancement Grants. And Ms. Cox is going to provide that report for us. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Fox and members of the council. Since 2000, the city's Community Enhancement Grant Program has provided grant funding opportunities for local nonprofit community and school groups to support environmental activities. The program has awarded close to $800,000 since its inception, with up to $45,000 annually. I'd like to thank the Community Funding Review Committee for reviewing this year's applications, and Chair Britta Holfen for joining us this evening to present the committee's recommendations for the 2017-18 Community Enhancement Grants.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm here to talk about the Community Funding Review Committee. As you know, we review two community grant funds. I will be discussing those this evening. The first one we reviewed back in October was the Community Enhancement Grant, and we are recommending that the city council approve the funding of the nine applicants for $39,426. The second fund that we reviewed, again in October, was the Sports Facility Endowment Grant. We are recommending that the city council approve the funding of nine applicants for a total of $80,428.91. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Questions from the council? All right. Thank you very much. We have no speaker cards on this item, so the chair will entertain a motion or discussion on this item. Mr. Adam.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I will move the community award recommendations by the staff.
Just for clarification, we're just dealing with 9B right now? That's what I thought. Okay. All right. Mr. Adam moves. Prepare the vote.
The motion passes 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Item 9C is the Sports Facility Endowment Fund, and I think they're going to give us the same report, are you not? Are you already did?
Yeah.
Okay, you did cover both. Okay, you did cover both, actually. Okay. Does staff have any questions or does the council have any questions on that report? You might have to come back. None?
I do, but I can't, here we go.
All right. Ms. Bill de la Pena has a question?
I don't have a question. I just have an observation to make that I think that all of the applicants are receiving the full requested amount.
That is correct.
Mm-hmm. All right. Is that because we had fewer applications this year?
It was because we had fewer applications and we were able to cover all, you know, the funds covered everyone.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
All right, we have one public speaker card of this item. Brian McQueeney. Brian?
Good evening, council. Thank you very much. I'm Brian McQueeney. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm the CEO of Ride On Therapy to Horsemanship. For those watching, Ride On is a local nonprofit organization that teaches horseback riding to children and adults with disabilities in partnership with the Cano Recreation and Park District. We have been providing service here for, coming on 17 years that we were just about to finish. I'd like to just take a moment to thank this council and the leaders of the city of Thousand Oaks for conceiving of the Sports Facility Endowment Fund. I think it takes unusual foresight and commitment and leadership to allocate these types of resources for recreational opportunities. And I can tell you firsthand that these types of programs, not only Ride On, but all the ones you're considering supporting tonight, provide immeasurable benefits to our young people and our old people and do in fact make our communities quite livable. Ride On came to Thousand Oaks at the Walnut Grove Equestrian Facility. It had been abandoned for probably 15 or 20 years before we got there. It was anything but an eyesore. With enormous community volunteerism, community support from the park district, from the city, we have taken what was an abandoned facility and turned it into really a diamond in the rough. One more star in the constellation of wonderful support services that are provided here in Thousand Oaks for its residents. We are, Ride On itself, by way of a progress report briefly, have just passed 45,000 lessons that we have delivered to children and adults here in Thousand Oaks. We have inspired probably over 120,000 hours of volunteerism at our facility. Back in 2015, Ride On was selected to manage the Special Olympics World Games Equestrian Competition. Last year, we were named a Center of Excellence for Peridrissage on one of only three centers in the country that's responsible for developing the next generation of Paralympians representing the United States in the Olympics. A lot of great stuff happens in this community. And I just want to take a brief moment to thank you, thank the committee for allowing us into your community, to inviting us and supporting us over all these years. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Ms. Bill de la Pena.
I move approval of the staff recommendation.
All right. Ms. Bill de la Pena moves item 9C. Discussion under motion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, prepare the vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
And that is approved. We will now move to item 10. That's department reports. Item 10A is the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy, LACC. And Ms. Cox, you're going to provide the staff report for that as well.
Thank you, Mayor Fox and members of the council. Good evening. I'm here, joined here tonight by Gary Giraud, who is the Chief Sustainability Officer for the Los Angeles County, and Mr. Jay Spurgeon, Director of Public Works, and Felicia Lieberman from our City Attorney's Office. Los Angeles Community Choice Energy is a new CCE in the state of California, joining eight other existing CCEs currently operating in the state. So, the way that Community Choice Energy programs work is illustrated here. Currently, the IOU, the investor-owned utility, in our case, Southern California Edison, is both the source of our power and the deliverer of that power to us. Under a CCE, what would happen is the first of those, the CCE would become the purchaser, the electricity supplier, buying or generating electricity on behalf of its customers, while SCE would retain the responsibility for delivering that energy to our customers. So, the breakdown of responsibilities is shown here. As I mentioned, SCE would retain responsibility for that electricity distribution. That means that they continue to build and maintain the grid infrastructure, they deliver the electricity to customers, they install, maintain, and read meters, they provide the customer billing, they respond to customer outages, and they provide customer service. In addition, they continue to provide the energy efficiency and demand response programs that are available and continue to provide the incentives for onsite generation through their net metering or feed-in tariff programs. What would happen is that the CCE would now take on responsibility for the purchase and generation of electricity for the customers and be responsible for balancing that electricity supply with the demand. In addition, the CCE would provide additional customer service. It is also able to administer its own energy efficiency and demand response programs, and it can choose to provide additional incentives for onsite generation. So, this shows a list of cities in operational CCE or CCA programs, I'm sorry, those terms tend to be used synonymously, in California. As you can see, there are dozens of cities already engaged in these CCE programs. Most of these are located in Northern California, in PG&Es territory. Three of them are currently operating in Southern California, in Southern California, Edison Territory. And those are Lancaster, Apple Valley, and more recently, Pico Rivera. So, the way that the CCEs compete with the IOUs or investor-owned utilities, in our case, Southern California Edison, is that the bill is comprised of two components, the generation component and the delivery component. The delivery component is the same for all CCE and IOU or SCE customers, so that is irrespective of which provider you're with. The generation portion of the bill, however, if you stay with the IOU, that would come from Southern California Edison. But if you choose to move to the CCE, then there's a generation charge plus an exit fee that's charged. Now, the CCE customers have to pay that exit fee, which is regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission. And it's basically there to ensure that the customers that remain with SCE are not unfairly impacted as a result of exiting customers. Now, the fee is designed to cover any losses that SCE might encounter as a result of having to sell power that was purchased on behalf of the exiting customers. But so far, for all the existing CCEs in the state, that generation plus exit fee charge has been less than that that's charged by the IOU. So, in all cases, the CCEs have been able to undercut the current IOU rates. Los Angeles CCE will be offering three different products. A standard product that's compatible or comparable with the current SCE product, one that's comprised of 50% renewable energy, and then one that's comprised of 100% renewable energy. The studies that were conducted on behalf of LACC project that the rates will be lower than SCE for both the standard product and for the 50%, sorry, for the 50% renewable with a slight premium for the 100% renewable product. This is just, I'm not going to go through these numbers, just want you to look at the bottom line here to give you an example of how it might impact customer bills. This is an example residential rates schedule or bill from Pico Rivera. And it shows here that customers receiving 50% renewable energy from that CCE are paying slightly less than current SCE customers that receive a standard product. This is an example from Lancaster. Their standard product is a 35% renewable product, and customers there have the option to go up to 100% renewable. Again, the 35% renewable product is cheaper than the SCE. And in fact, any of the cost savings can also be used by the CCE to invest in local energy programs or energy efficiency as determined by the CCE. So, current state law requires that 33% of electricity comes from renewable sources by 2020 and that this increases to 50% by 2030. Currently, SCE, like other IOUs, is meeting that mandate and in fact exceeding it slightly. They're actually projected to exceed it by quite a bit by 2020 in terms of the contracts, the power purchase contracts that they already have in place. Under LACC, there would be three different products, as I mentioned. An RPS, a renewable portfolio standard compliant product, one that meets the state's mandates, a 50% renewable product that would start off at 50% and be constant at that value, and 100% renewable product. This is an example that was conducted as part of the feasibility study for LACC that just shows the impact of those programs on greenhouse gas emissions. If an average city chose to, or if its customers chose to enroll in the 50% renewable product, that would generate approximately a 10% or 9% decrease in greenhouse gas emissions for the city. That's significant in helping address climate change and emission goals. So, the main benefit of joining LACC would be customer choice. So, LACC offers customers new options, there are new rates, there are new renewable energy content offerings, but without removing any of the existing or old options that are offered by SCE. Customers can opt out of LACC at any time and return to Southern California Edison, if that's what they choose. Another benefit is local control. So, the LACC enables communities to invest locally in renewable energy or in an energy efficiency. And if we elected to move forward with this, there would be a representative from their city sitting on the board and having a say in that power generation. The risk to joining LACC has been determined both by our legal department and also by the counties to be fairly minimal. The JPA does protect the city from any liability, financial liability, debt liability, and the risk is limited to that of tort liability, which applies only to injuries. And in fact, the JPA also indemnifies its members from tort liability, provides additional insurance as well. If the city chooses to withdraw in the future, then the city would be liable for costs incurred by LACC for purchasing power on behalf of its customers. So, they would have to sell power purchase contracts that they had enacted on behalf of the city, and any losses would be the responsibility of the city. On the other hand, there really is no foreseeable reason that the city as a whole would choose to withdraw because individual customers can withdraw individually. So, the city really has no reason to withdraw as an entity. A third point is that the city hasn't really compared joining LACC with joining any other CCEs, although we did do a study, obviously, that we participated in to former Tri-County, which was found to be economically infeasible. In terms of resources, there would be some council member and staff time entailed in preparing for and participating in those JPA board and committee meetings. There would be some outreach required to educate and inform our residents and businesses and potentially additional staff time to handle any increases in communications or questions from our residents and businesses. We foresee those as being items that would probably occur in the first few months of the program, but probably limited thereafter. There is a significant benefit to signing up for the program now. At this point, there is no cost to the city if we decide to sign up by the end of this month, or actually December 27th. The county, LA County, is providing a $10 million loan towards the startup costs and power procurement, and that loan will be paid back with revenue once electricity sales are made. One consideration is that this LACC may be unable to become or remain cost competitive with SCE. If that happens, before our electricity is served, there's no liability to the city. Well, there's no liability to the city at all in that case, it remains with the JPA. One important point is that joining LACC won't have any direct impact on our own local government supply because currently, most of the city's facilities are served through a direct access agreement, which supplies us with 100% renewable energy at a very cost competitive rate. The benefit is primarily for our residents and businesses and providing choice for them. One other point that I wanted to make is the relationship between solar that residents or businesses may want to put on their own sites. So, applications from businesses and residents for onsite solar would still need to go through the same process through SCE that it goes through now. And that's because they're the agent that provides interconnection to the grid. And the size limit that SCE imposes on those businesses and residents is based on the previous 12 months' use and would not be affected by joining a CCE. On the other hand, within that limitation, the LACC plans to pay customers at a higher rate for any excess solar energy generated than SCE currently does. And in addition, LACC could decide to offer a feed-in tariff or a power purchase agreement to incentivize local solar development. One other reason that it's a good time to join right now is that state bills could curtail or limit the formation or expansion of CCEs. There were two bills in the state assembly last year that attempted to reduce the power of CCEs and their formation. And in fact, there's a resolution going before the CPUC in January that also attempts to limit the formation of new CCEs and their expansion. In addition, the CPUC will be conducting proceedings next year on that exit fee that I mentioned and how that's charged to CCE customers. And SCE has asked for a significant increase in that fee. However, the LACC has taken that into account in its projections, and even with the projected increase, believes that it can still undercut SCE costs. So, the way that the Joint Powers Agreement and Authority works is that every member government gets an equal seat on the board. So, if the city decided to join, it's one member, one vote, the same as the LA County. Most votes are by a majority of members present, though there are some special items that require a two-thirds vote. There are three standing committees. Those have not yet been formed and will be formed next month. There would be a director elected from the council. And in addition, the city can appoint two alternate directors that can be council members or staff members. Currently, as I mentioned, there's no cost for the cities to join. It's a phased approach where LA County accounts are served first, and then we would start receiving service in the mid-part of 2018, and all of our customers will be served by the end of 2018. So, to move ahead with this, the council would need to approve and execute the Joint Powers Agreement before December 27th, adopt an ordinance, and both readings of that ordinance would need to be approved by January 11th. If we do enroll, then all cities, residents, and businesses would be automatically defaulted to LACC. And any individual customer can opt out within the first 60 days with no charge and can return at any time. They can stay with SCE initially and later move to LACC. Or they can opt out of LACC and come back to SCE. The other determination will be at some point, the city will need to determine what that default renewable content is, which are the three programs people will be. that default renewable content is, which are the three programs people will be participating in, though individuals can change that themselves. That's just the default starting plan. With that it, that's, we're available here for questions and thank you for your attention.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cox. Mr. Adams, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it certainly seems like a creative way to lower energy expenses for the average consumer and cut greenhouse gases at the same time to comply with state mandates. Just so I understand, the power would still be delivered through SCE lines and infrastructure, right?
Correct.
So where does the CCE procure the power from?
It can build its own facilities. It can enter through power purchase agreements, through third parties, and then that third party puts the power on the California, the Cal ISO grid. They're still the grid operator and it's just delivered through SCE to the customers.
So since it's just starting up though, is that going to be reliable? I mean, I've visited a lot of businesses here in town and when there's a power outage, if they're producing on an assembly line, for example, it ruins the entire product. They have to start over again. So power reliability is very important.
They have to. They're responsible for that reliability, but it's exactly the same way that the, there's no difference in power outages between whether you're a CCE customer or an SCE customer. If there's a power outage, it would be for everybody. The power supplier, the power generator doesn't make any difference in that case.
Okay. And just one other thing, it's kind of more endemic to Thousand Oaks. You know, we have the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant and as I understand it, we generate excess power there. But for some reason, Jay might know, but we're not able to sell the excess power. Isn't that correct?
That's...
In this particular arrangement, we could?
That's due to the interconnection agreement that we have with Edison right now. We could connect through a different kind of agreement where we could potentially sell power. So depending on whether that facility moved to CCE, there is potential for selling the power to that entity.
So we could sell that power?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's probably a drop in the bucket, but in the overall scheme of things, but okay. So how's Southern Cal Ed feel about all this?
They say they're neutral.
Neutral, huh? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Thank you. Yeah, as I'm driving my hybrid vehicle out to Mammoth to ski, on a 14 there, you come across and it's been under construction for several years now, a massive solar array that's being developed just on the, I guess that's the north or, I don't even know what direction it is at that point, side of the highway. And there's another one right outside of Mojave and they're putting them up out there left and right. And I suspect that that is the power that's being generated to supply these CCEs. Is that accurate?
Well, some of them, not necessarily. They're also being built for the utilities themselves, for SCE and for LADWP and for PG&E. Most of, a lot of those power generation facilities are going up in the desert.
Oh, really?
Both because of wind and solar.
So you mentioned that there were several, at least two state bills up in Sacramento last year that would limit the creation of new CCEs. I'm curious why that would be. Is that because the neutral SCE has a strong lobby as well as PG&E or?
Yeah, we believe that IOUs have fairly strong lobbies. Both those bills were defeated, but of course, things can resurface in the future.
Yeah, it seems a little counterintuitive that they're passing laws that, and I recognize we have a former state legislator in the audience here.
What happens when I leave?
What's that? No. I just find it ironic that at the same time they're passing laws that require that we meet certain thresholds of renewable energy, they are denying us the ability to achieve those thresholds. So you're as perplexed by that as I am.
Well, yeah, the utility companies, PG&E and SCE, are also mandated to meet those minimum requirements, but the CCEs are trying to accelerate the move over to renewables. But all utilities are required to meet those sort of minimum state standards.
That'll be interesting to watch.
But yes, it is a little ironic that they're...
Thank you. Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Thank you. I wanted to just clarify. So customers who currently have solar systems, they are able to sell energy to the CCE at perhaps a better price than what SCE is offering?
I believe that's something that the JPA will make a decision on. Is that correct, Gary?
That's right. Looking at the history of community choice programs in the state, all of the community choice programs do provide more generous incentives for solar. We expect that ours will also offer those kinds of incentives.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, you have another question?
Thank you, Mayor. Just another quick question. So if the CCE is procuring power from the same place that Southern California Edison is, correct? How would the CCA be able to offer the power on average 4% less charged than Southern Cal Ed? Is it a question of overhead or it's just cheaper?
I think it's a combination.
I mean, the power's not any cheaper, is it?
There's a couple of reasons. First of all, we're a new market entrant and Edison has legacy contracts that are much more expensive. So going into the market now, when the market is at its lowest point, gives us a natural advantage initially. Of course, their legacy contracts will begin to expire, but we'll operate as a nonprofit government entity, so we're not going to be making a profit on the power we provide. And we'll be able to borrow at government rates, something that Edison doesn't have access to. So we believe that over the long term, we'll be able to continue to be competitive.
And we can continue to be cheaper in the long run.
Our financial plan, and we've updated now three times, continues to project over a 20-year period, we can be competitive with Southern California Edison.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We have four speakers cards on this item. Our first speaker would be Karen Stevens, followed by Fran Pavly.
Hi, my name is Karen Stevens and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. And I just had some points I wanted to hit on that have been made, but I am strongly in support of this. I think, you know, our economy is moving towards renewable energy and by the city of Thousand Oaks moving in this regard, it gives everybody the ability to participate in it rather than, you know, each individual trying to get solar or whatever. This opens it up so, you know, anybody that's inclined can make that choice and make that choice at whatever percentage they want to. Also, the fact that there's potential for a lower rate is very desirable. People can opt in or out at, you know, whatever their decision is and there's no cost to the city. I really urge that the council votes in favor of this. I think this is, it's time for this and I think the community would welcome this choice. All right. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is a former mayor, former assembly member, former senator. So we welcome Senator Fran Pavly. Good evening.
Thank you very much. A pleasure for me to be here and I've been able to represent Thousand Oaks for four years up in the legislature. I wanted to share with you my enthusiasm for this. In fact, Thousand Oaks, if you approve this tonight, would be the first city in Ventura County to be a member and there's bragging rights with that, parties and things like that. And Ventura County supervisors voted today to move forward with this as well. So all the unincorporated areas that are mixed in with your surrounding areas from Lake Sherwood to Santa Rosa Valley and Oak Park would be part of it as well as Agora, Calabasas and all the unincorporated areas of LA County. But regarding negotiating energy procurement collectively between Ventura County and LA County, there'll be over 1.5 million customers that will be part of this. And that's only about 15 to 17 cities in LA County plus the unincorporated area, which is 1 million LA citizens. You can negotiate pretty favorable energy contracts that can meet or beat what Edison is doing. Edison doesn't make their profits off energy procurement anymore. That sort of happened with these regulations. So cities have found a way to be smarter in negotiating energy prices. CCAs have been around for over seven years. Now over 110 cities and counties are members of CCAs. No one's left in seven years. It's been a good model. They've met or reduced rates for their customers. And what residents like, as the last speaker said, they like the opportunity. Do you get a choice on whether you're a member of the PUC and investor-owned utility? No, they like this opportunity. And then the JPA, which you would be a member of. Thousand Oaks has one vote, just like one supervisor in LA County would have one vote or one supervisor in Ventura County. It's really a democratic process. You could decide yourself that you want ability to sell excess power that you generate, whether it's from your wastewater treatment plant or for a homeowner, back into your own grid. I think it's just a smart strategy. I like competition in the marketplace. I think you can control a little bit more your own energy mix. Thousand Oaks, like Agora Hills residents, see that renewables are the wave of the future. They're cleaner and also generally renewable energy is homegrown energy right here in California and we're not subjected to the problems associated with importing energy from long distances, even from other states. I was up in Sacramento during the energy due regulation crisis. I think CCAs and renewable energy came out of that. We're just smarter now. And so with the choice option in this, I think residents and businesses can make that decision for themselves. The JPA they've set up has that nice firewall from litigation or risks. We've had Thousand Oaks, but Calabasas and all these cities and counties have looked at financial risks. It's minimal. Your staff report was, I thought, excellent. I've been to about 10 of these council meetings. I think it's the wave of the future and if you make predictions, they're looking that 75% of all the cities in California will eventually be part of a CCE. So that is probably why, Mr. Price, that there's, they're looking at putting a freeze or a moratorium and trying to figure out what other business model that they can come up with. But I think this is in the best interest of your city and I welcome you on board.
All right. Senator, we thank you for your service to the communities out here. All right, our next speaker is J.C. Simmons, followed by Kevin Matthews. Good evening again, sir.
Good evening again, council and Thousand Oaks. I just want to speak favorably for joining the CCE. I think it's a great opportunity for us to get off the, to re-encourage renewable energy. I want to put solar panels on the roof of our house. My wife says no. This will give me the opportunity to vote into renewables. Thank you.
Good luck with that.
We don't want to get in the middle of this.
Sure, it'll be the determining factor on that one. Mr. Matthews, you're our last speaker on this item.
Thank you. Good evening. I haven't spoken to the council before. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm also in support of this. I find this a really exciting opportunity, actually, not as a consumer of energy, let's say, but more importantly, as a parent. I mean, to make a real simple, I'm not an economist, but to make a real simple economic point, every time we don't take opportunities like this, we foreclose options for the next generation and we really transfer costs down to them and so on. I think of organizations trying to do work right now to reduce their carbon footprint. They can't have this kind of impact. As Senator Pavly is pointing out, this is a good-sized CCE and it'll be able to have purchasing power and really have an impact, do things that a local university trying to reduce its carbon footprint can't easily do. So congratulations on having the ability to enter into something like this and, you know, I think it's an exciting prospect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. That concludes our speaker cards. This is a departmental report. What is the pleasure of the council? Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Thank you. I move staff recommendation, one and two.
All right, Ms. Bill De La Peña moves items one and two. Mr. Price?
I'm sorry, I meant to withdraw that. I was going to make a motion.
All right, Mr. Powers?
All right. Just wanted to make a quick point. As was discussed in the staff presentation, there is a determination of a seat on the board that will need to be made. It is staff's intent to work with the mayor in our process, which will be taking place in the next few weeks of annual selection of committees and commissions and include this as one of those. So if that's okay with the council, we will include that as one of those annual items and work to select a council member to join that. There also will be two alternates on that and I think our intention is to have those both as staff alternates as we do on some other similar type boards.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Ms. Bill De La Peña has a motion. If there's no further discussion, Ms. Rodriguez, prepare the vote.
The motion carries 5-0 and your ordinance title is an ordinance approving joint powers agreement for Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Authority and authorizing implementation of community choice aggregation program.
All right. That is approved. We're going to move to item 12. That's council issues and recommendations. 12A is the follow-up report on the League of Cities Conference or National League of Cities Conference.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying to get to that. Here we go. So I concluded my year of service as the chair of the Public Safety and Crime Prevention Committee at the League of Cities, National League of Cities Summit Conference, which was held November 14th through the 19th in Charlotte, North Carolina. Our committee met and finalized a number of resolutions, renewed a number of resolutions dealing with issues such as penalties to those cities that are perceived to be sanctuary cities, the withholding of federal funds to those cities. We talked quite a bit about, certainly with the backdrop of Las Vegas, we once again had lengthy discussions about gun control and other issues related to those crimes of violence and mental health is always at the top of the list. There were a number of outstanding sessions. We had a new, I should mention that there was a new president who was named, Mayor Mark Stotler from Little Rock, Arkansas, is the new president of the National League of Cities. And yours truly was elected to the Board of Directors of the National League of Cities and I'm honored to be a member of that organization and advocate on the behalf of the residents of the city of Thousand Oaks here. So I think I'll leave it at that. The rest of the report is on file here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Powers, city manager report.
Not much to report this evening, only to wish everyone Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy first night of Hanukkah. And our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be in the new year on the Tuesday, the 9th of January. The agenda's still taking shape for that evening, but we wish everyone a great holiday season and look forward to seeing you in 2018.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Powers. We have no closed session items on the schedule. So as Mr. Powers said, this will be our last meeting for the year of 2017. On behalf of the council, let me wish everybody in our community a very Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah and a happy and safe New Year. And we will be adjourned until January 9th, 2018. Thanks very much.